November 7th, 2012, meeting of Milton School Committee. Invite you to stand and salute the flag as is our practice.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we begin, I'd like to take just a moment if we could to have a moment of silence in memory of several people this week, unfortunately. Claire White, who was wife of former Selectman Bill White and mother of our Jackie Morgan in the Food Service. Frances Sorji, mother of Kevin Sorji, former town treasurer. And Alice Walsh, mother of Brian Walsh, our current town moderator, all passed away within the last week. I'd like to just take a moment of silence on their behalf. Thank you. So we move on to proving tonight's agenda. I have several corrections to it. Just going in order down in the superintendent's report and A in the NEAS presentation, we have Principal James Jett. We also have Margaret Gibbons here with us tonight. The superintendent has to add a couple pieces to the report, so before her happenings will change from C to E. C will be a piece on middle school sports and D on some grade seven advancement electives in science math. So she's added a couple things to her report. Under my report at the end, I'd like to add that we all received in the mail last week the additional MASC resolution that got left off of the resolution booklet when it was mailed out. So I'd like to take a moment and just deal with that under the end of my report. Ms. Bagley-Jones has indicated she wanted to take off the Health and Wellness Subcommittee report, so we'll strike number eight. We are also striking 10H, policy JGA, the grade one assignment policy. Put that off to another meeting. Any other corrections, amendments to the agenda for tonight? Seeing none, we'll declare that approved. To citizen speak, do we have anyone for citizen speak? If not, so we will move on to our minutes of September 19th. Group from Sheridan, seconded by Ms. Kelly. Any corrections, comments to the minutes of September 19th? Hearing none, I'll call for a vol. All those in favor of the minutes of September 19th, 2012? It is unanimous, thank you. And so we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Chairman Pavlicek. I'd like to invite to the table Milton High School Principal James Jett and Milton High School Nurse and Head Nurse for the District, Margaret Gibbons, who was a member of the NEAS team. Can you see from there?
I guess.
Welcome.
Thank you. Excuse me for turning my back to you, it just gives me an opportunity to see the PowerPoint Margaret Gibbons and myself were here this evening as a follow-up to the school committee meeting that was held on September 19th. And I guess there was a few questions or requests that were asked of a few school committee members. And hopefully during this presentation, we'll answer those questions. And if there's any additional questions, we'll follow up on those. The first thing, and I know we talked about some of the recommendations, as opposed to being redundant, I will go through them very quickly. But the recommendations were part of the continued accreditation letter that was issued to Dr. Joe Arangio. It was dated May 16th, but we didn't get the letter until later in May. But I'm pleased to say that some of the work, some of the recommendations that were made as part of the NEAS follow-up committee, some of the recommendations have already been completed and some have been addressed, and we'll talk about that as we go through the presentation. The first thing, which was big, was understand the 21st century learning expectations, which you all have a packet and we'll make reference to them later in this presentation. Develop and implement a school-wide format for curriculum. That is part of the work that we will be doing and continue to do during the early release times that we proposed and the school committee graciously approved that on September 19th. Examine student work and use assessment data to inform instruction and drive instruction. That is something that we've been doing all along, but in addition to AP, PSATs, SATs, MCAS, any other data, we're looking at formative, summative assessments that we hope that our teachers are really working in, honing in, and tightening up as we move out throughout the course of the year. Examine student work and use assessment data, I talked a little bit about that. Establish a formal process for collecting and reporting on data. Again, that is something today, we just had a principals' meeting, we talked a little bit about that. We set up our December principal meeting to kind of serve as a springboard to start more of the conversation about what we're going to do to formalize and structure that time during the early release days. Have formative and summative assessments again, and then review, revise, and analyze data from common and formative assessment. Some of it sounds redundant. In your packet, you have the sequence of recommendations. A lot of those recommendations, there's codes associated with them, a T for time. That's the collaborative time that we would like to do some of this work. It is a process, and we'll talk a little bit about that. For the purpose of tonight, we're going to really hone in on what we need to do for the February 1st special progress report. NEAS, in that letter that you received, that is the first document is part of that. They gave us somewhat of a timeline and structure for us to identify, address, or implement certain aspects of their recommendation, and that's what we're currently working on. So the special progress report is due February 1st. Then we have a two-year progress report that's due October 1st, 2013, and we'll talk a little bit about that. And then we have part of that sequence, the recommendation sequence, there's the three- or five-year plan. Basically, they've given us ample time to really delve into their recommendations and plan out thoughtfully how we proceed. So what is our charge for February 1st, 2013? And I would talk about this a little bit more. What I did is I extracted that information directly out of the NEAS letter, the letter that you received in your packet dated May 16th. It's to develop and begin to implement a plan for the regular review and evaluation and revision of the curriculum and places of school core values. I want to talk about that just a little bit. That process has already been underway. I think it's important to know, which I failed to mention a little bit on the September 19th meeting, we had our guidance counselors come in during the summer work on curriculum. We had a follow-up committee that met in the summer in preparation because we thought we were going to do a presentation earlier in September. So a lot of the work had already begun, and now it's our charge is to really tighten it up and talk about how are we going to measure some of these things that we're looking at. Identify which department and content areas assume responsibilities for teaching and assessing each of the 21st century learning expectations. This is key. On our professional development day, October 5th, what we did after the learning expectations committee really honed in and defined what our 21st century learning expectations will be, and I'll talk a little bit about that as well, and there's a document in reference to that in your packet. What we did is we asked, I know the committee asked, well, how do you prioritize them? And it was one of those things that we really had a difficult time trying to prioritize them as a school as a whole, because each content area is different. But what we did as opposed to saying, okay, math, you take number one, science, you take number two, we asked every single department to be accountable and responsible for every single one of those 21st century learning expectations. So on October 5th, we talked about it, they prioritize them as a group, they will be tweaking them, and then we try to define and we're trying to look at ways in which, okay, if you're going to take on this, how are you going to assess it? How are you going to determine whether or not the kids understand it? So that's what we did on October 5th.
Can I just stop at the 21st century learning expectations? So there's seven items listed here.
Right.
Those have been arrived at by your team, or that's what every system across the state is using or across the country? What's that process?
There's a slide in here, which I think you have, and it talks about there's three organizations that talk and deal with 21st century learning expectations. And all the way to the right, and I hope you have the color copy because it kind of differentiates it a little bit, all the way to the right, they give you the six learning expectation. And what they do, they try to condense the research on those three organizations, which is also part of NEAS and on the NEAS website. So NEAS approved. And what we did is we modified ours to closely resemble what those are on the right-hand side, the six.
But I guess my overall question is...
Are they being used across...
No. My question is, is this it? So if a Milton High School, if a student in, if a child in Milton, a family in Milton is deciding to come to the Milton Public Schools, this would be the document that basically would give them the big picture of what Milton High School will provide in terms of education. Is that what we're saying?
Yes.
Or is there additional items?
Nope, that's what we're saying.
That would be combined with this? So this is it? This covers it?
Yes.
Thank you.
Provide teachers with increased formal and structured time. That was the whole presentation on September 19th, which you guys, again graciously voted in favor of allowing us that time. And we'll talk about the dates, we identified the dates as well, that we begin to start to publicize if everything goes well this evening. Ensure prior to each unit of study, teachers communicate the school's applicable 21st century learning expectations in addition to the objective for that lesson. Now, that has not been established 100% yet because we did not come to a definitive decision on what those 21st century learning expectations were until a little bit after October 5th. We presented it again to our full faculty and staff on the first day of school, gave them, on the 27th, I believe it was, gave them opportunity to give feedback in the department heads. We discussed it at our leadership meeting, then we came back on October 5th and we discussed them again. So it wasn't something that we did overnight and implemented. We want it full, all feedback from the faculty and staff to give some buy-in, and we used that information, and that's how we came up with that final document. Ensure that every high school student within the experience is participating in a heterogenously grouped core class. That has already started, I think I talked about that on the 19th as well. That is the modern world culture, modern world civilization class that every freshman is enrolled in. So obviously, it'd be hard to kind of implement that for seniors right now, but moving forward, every freshman come in. And we may look to do other classes like that. We're not necessarily cemented or settled with just one class, but for now, that was our charge, and that has already started, and that started on August 29th. So the 21st century learning expectations you have in your packet, for the purpose of those who are here that don't have a packet, effectively apply critical thinking skills to solve problems, communicate skillfully and effectively through written, visual, and oral, and technological means. And we went back and forth on this whole thing. And to make it applicable to every single content area, for foods, for automotive, for woodshop, for art, all of these skills have to, we want every single teacher in this building to own these seven 21st century learning expectations. How they prioritize them within their content area may vary from content to content. Did you want to add something?
I'll wait.
Okay. Apply tools and technology to a variety of authentic tasks. Again, technology, some people immediately go to computers, but the technology that use in woodshop, in automotives, the photography and art classes, again, a wide variety of technology instruments that are used. Demonstrate connections between and among subjects to enhance understanding. By having that collaborative time, we're allowing teachers in math to collaborate with teachers in science, that interdisciplinary, those interdisciplinary learning opportunities is a great opportunity for our kids, and it kind of reinforces in the kids internalize the content that they are learning. Demonstrate originally, originality and innovation through individual and collaborative work. Again, a lot of this may sound very redundant, but it all boils down to our teachers getting together to collaborate, to look at teaching, student achievement, and how do we continue to move students forward? And we feel as though that collaborative time is very important for our staff and our students benefit from that. Demonstrate good citizenship and personal responsibility and character through individual and collective actions. Our students are already underway into the variety of projects, not only within the classroom but outside of the classrooms. We want this to extend beyond the boundaries of just the school building or the four walls in your classroom, but we want them to be good citizens throughout the community as well. And demonstrate understanding and respect for the diversity of ideas, cultures, abilities, and lifestyles. And ideas were very important. When we're sitting and we have kids in front of us in a class, we want our students to feel comfortable taking educational risk. And what I mean by that, not fearing, asking a question, we want kids to take that chance each and every time to enhance their learning. Same thing with cultures and ability and lifestyles. We have a wide variety of students. When we talk about the diversity, it's just not ethnic or racial, cultural, or religion, but it's also ability levels and demographics. So how, to your question, a little bit, Ms. Kelly, the 21st century, we took that crosswalk, that learning crosswalk that you have in your packet, and it's the three different organizations which we have up there. It's the North Central Regional Educational Lab, and the International Society of Technology and Education, along with the Partnership for the 21st Century Learning Skills. You have a reference there, if you ever wanted to, you could explore further on the website. The website is very in-depth with information that allow you to look at some of the work that NEAS has displayed on that website for not only our purpose, but anybody going through that process. Why did we revise ours? If you were to walk in the classrooms last year, you will have some of these learning expectations that were already posted on the wall. So we took what we had on there and we modified them to reflect the 21st century learning expectation. Our goal is to do the same thing, enhance these, maybe posterize, and put them in every single classroom within the building. Our learning expectations needed to become more closely connected to the curriculum, instruction, and assessment. And then we also wanted our learning expectations to be readily measurable. I think that was something that I think Mr. Walker has asked for a couple of times, and I'm sure all of you has asked for at various times, whether it was last year's presentation with Dr. Arangio here. That is one of the charges that we're really working with our department heads and also our teachers. How are we measuring what we say that we're going to do? So that may vary from subject matter to content matter, and it may vary from lesson to lesson. I know, and here's a couple examples. I didn't want to read them, but I wanted to provide a couple of examples of how, what does measuring some of these things, or how can you assess some of these things? The teachers gave me a lot, but for the sake of this presentation, I did not want to put multiple things up here for us to read, but I would be more than willing to provide a packet of some of the examples that they've already came up with. I thought about that after I submitted the original packet, but the teachers are looking at it, they will again do some more of that work on the first Wednesday of December, and I hope when we come together in January, we could really fine tune that. And there's just a couple of, we just pulled out a couple of samples of the learning expectations. I think you have it in your packet. I don't want to read all of that, that's a lot to read at this time. So what have we done so far? If you remember, in your packet, there was five recommendations that we needed to complete by February 1st, 2013. We currently are on our way with at least 10 of those recommendations, so some of them go beyond February 1st, 2013. The first one is develop a schedule to pilot five early release days. Again, we have that. Our goal is to start in January. We have those dates listed, it would be the first Wednesday of each month with the exception of January. The first Wednesday in January is January 2nd. We didn't feel as though that was, we didn't think that was appropriate to come off the heels of a vacation and then immediately go have one day and go right into a half-day. So we decided to go with the 9th, which you, I believe you have in your packet. Continue the conversation, determine methods of measuring student achievement, both individually and in aggregate. Even before NEAS, I think that this work was being done, but this gives us more of a focus, and everyone is on board with this, and is buying from everyone. Align our learning expectations to the 21st century learning skills. We did that, you have that in your packet as well. Initiate the conversation in the process where department and content areas assume responsibility for teaching and assessing the school-wide 21st learning century skills. Again, we did that on October 5th. We will continue to do that. We're going to continue to monitor and tweak if we need to on ways in which we measure this from departments. Continue to use data to inform instruction, increase student achievement. Whether NEAS came in or not, that was something that we have done and we will continue to do. Increase the number of formal, cross-disciplinary, and integrated learning experience. I wish I brought that piece for you, because I also have that. Some of the teachers have already given examples of what they would like to do and what they have done in the past in terms of interdisciplinary activities to reinforce student learning. Enhance a formal and ongoing program which ensures each student has one adult in addition to the school counselor that will help them with their high school experience. We talked a little bit about that on September 19th, that's the advisory period, where each student has an advisor. On Tuesdays, they have this advisory period where the advisor will sit down one-on-one with individuals. They might get through five, four or five students, depending on how well it goes. Each of those advisory periods, and they have a structured form that they follow, they're asking questions, how, they're checking in on their classes, what do you do for extracurricular activities? What are your goals? What are your interests? That happens in those advisory periods, and we kind of highlighted that on the September 19th meeting. Involve teachers and building administrators in the budget process. Kudos to Dr. Arangio, our teachers have always been involved in the budget process, but providing a little more structured in terms of breaking it down by departments, in terms of supplies, materials, what they need, in terms of professional development, money allocated for professional development by department. So our teachers have a say in that, and we discuss that. Every Thursday at 1:30, we have a leadership meeting where we bring together all department heads, including Margaret, and they're part of that process, and we talk about the budget process, and they have more documentation on how they get involved. Establish a heterogeneous core class that every student will take in his or her high school experience. I alluded to that, we've already implemented that. And the administration and the follow-up committee will continue to monitor and implement the recommendations. We are about to bring our group together again to start looking at some of the recommendations that are due by October 13th, October 1st, 2013, and beyond. So we will continue to do that. And then the last slide that we have is our proposed early release days. That has been checked with our district calendar. I do know a couple of the days are, one day I believe is in April, that is our art exhibit, which is 6 o'clock to 8:00 PM. It doesn't necessarily interfere with too many events, obviously. And then we have music in our schools, a concert in the evening of March 6th. So we cross-reference these dates with the district-wide calendar, and these days all seem to work out. School, as we talked about on that early release proposal, school starts at its normal time at 7:50. Students will leave at approximately 11:16. Staff will have a brief lunch, and then we will do our professional development from about 2:45, excuse me, 11:45 to 2:45. I would also say I have down here for transportation, two to four buses. That was part of the recommendation of the concerns about students who are getting out early, who typically have a ride to school in the morning but may not have a ride home. So probably our first brush in January, we'll probably have the four buses, two to go to each side of, each side of town, two buses to East Milton, depending on, and then we're kind of getting, we assess that to see if we actually need the four buses. And so I know you have a lot of information in your packet, we tried to give you as much as we could. Some of it was redundant from what we gave you the last time. But I know there was concerns about the advisory period, you have that packet in there as well. If there's any questions that you have, I would be more than willing to try to answer them. And I know that was a, flying through that process.
I guess you're wondering why I am here.
Support.
After I've looked at this, I'm one, this comprehensive presentation, I'm wondering myself. But what I can speak to is that the teachers are on board with all of these initiatives, as vast as they seem, and have begun working by department and collaboratively on many parts to this huge piece. If you'd like to liken it to a business plan, it would be reviewed often to see where they're heading. Make sure you take a pulse on your market, our students, and be prepared to adjust, modify, or change parts of the plan. We've begun doing common assessments, we've begun doing a common rubric for those assessments that started last year and midterms followed through. And I don't want to bore you with a whole list of, we have, we have, we have, we have. What you need to know is they're doing, they're doing, they're doing, and they're doing, and they keep doing. And the teachers have felt very supported by you with your vote to give them the common planning time. It really re-energized a lot of their thinking that you realize that this work can't be done, you know, in a 45-minute prep period that they may or may not have with their colleagues at the high school. So you need to know how important that position was and how it has really made more cohesiveness and more energy towards getting so many other of these agenda items right there, completed and taken care of for moving forward as NEAS wants us to go in that particular direction. Again, I came, yes, to support for sure, but also to tell you that the teachers have embraced this. The teachers want and will continue to work tirelessly to having one of the best high schools we could, you know, point to. And they do, they genuinely love their work, and it shows.
Mr. Walker, you have a question?
Not a question. And I like Ms. Gibbons' characterization of this as a business plan. As you know, I've been asking for the business plan for some time now, but I would like to compliment you, this is by far the most clearly articulated discussion of what we need to accomplish, over what time period, how we prioritize it, and what we expect some of the outcomes to be. So, thank you and congratulations.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Dyer.
Fantastic, but I have a question just kind of on the side of that. Just thank you for the advisory period history, very thorough. So my question is, you said the Tuesday is still the advisory period. I'm still unclear on whether you, students meet with someone that's not their guidance counselor who's an advisor, or if they're meeting with their guidance counselor in group guidance or individual guidance.
It could be a combination of both. During that advisory period, group guidance meets with anywhere from 105, 100 to 105 kids during that time, and they're working on, whether it's working, this part of the year they were working with the seniors, making sure that they get everything together for the seniors. The rest of the group is still in the advisory period, and that's when the advisor within that class is doing the interviews with the students. Students are working in that class and that advisory, that advisor is making one-on-one interviews and going through that lesson, and they will, excuse me, going through that survey with the students and getting feedback on, and encouraging them and working with them and getting their ideas and stuff.
Okay. I think I've got it then. So the counselors pull out students for certain topics.
Counselors pull out, but I will say they also, sometimes they do an assembly. It all depends on what comes up during, taking them to the computer lab, working on Aviance, and so it's a variety of different activities.
And it's a rotation, so that the students who are out that time are back in the next time. So they also have their opportunity to meet with their advisor, who's not their guidance counselor.
Right, so each student does have an advisor and a guidance counselor outside of that as well, and they meet with them separately in different times during the advisory period. Got it. Answers my question, thank you. Answers my question. Thank you.
Other questions? Sure.
I have a question about, first of all, thank you for the presentation, about the 21st century skills crosswalk document. I thought that this was a great document, to be able to look at the different styles and recommendation. I'm familiar, very familiar with ISTI, and I wondered if there's anyone currently at the high school that's, you know, attends meetings or any of these. I don't know if the other groups have conferences that they can attend. It might even be at a leadership level that there might be someone that attends the technical.
It's a very good question. I don't think so right now.
But we can ask at next week's, tomorrow's meeting. Thanks.
I, oh, go ahead.
No, please.
One quick question. I noticed in the assessments here, they tend to be student learning outcome assessments that are sort of curricular-based and so forth. Has NIAS asked anything about sort of postgraduate assessments, surveys of graduates to see how, whether they have in fact developed the skills that the 21st century expectations say they will? I know in higher ed, that's part of NIAS, and I just didn't know if that was something they were looking at, at the, at the high school level as well.
Not that I, not that I know of, but it's funny that you asked that question because that's part of the conversation that some of the teachers will have it. Not only what are you doing to get kids into college, but what are you doing to make sure that they're successful and moving beyond? So, and we talked about, you know, developing a survey and surveying alumni and things like that, so, but that's something that we could look to formalize.
I mean, we have to look, you know, three, four, five years out with surveys and sort of find out without asking them, which is the trickiest part with assessing these surveys. You can't ask them directly what you want the answer to. You have to sort of try to tease it out some other way, if in fact they have developed the skills, you know. Have you learned something on your own in the last, you know, that you weren't taught or something like this, and those sorts of things to see. Interesting to see if, it might be somewhere NIAS is going at the high school level.
May I reply to that? I had said to Principal Jett that I've observed over the years that high school, everybody becomes involved with NIAS from different avenues and different points of view, but there's an interesting relationship with principals and the organization. So I had said to Principal Jett the other day, now that you've had a few months, I'd like you to get involved with the organization, and he had already scheduled himself into a one or two-day session with NIAS. So to better understand those questions you're asking and the intricacies of, you know, responding to these letters and the deadlines and the obligations of belonging and what the accreditation means.
Kelly.
So thank you very much. Tremendous amount of work going on here, and to Mr. Walker's point, you know, to me it's the beginning of a business plan. I guess I'd like to see some other sections to try and get to how are we quantifying and assessing, you know, sort of so we can go right across. But going back to the 21st learning expectations, to me, that's policy. It presumably would be in our handbooks. So to me, and I'm asking the administration this, this is something that needs, I think, to be brought before the school committee and basically approved. I can't see anything listed here that would present any problems, but I would hate, I mean, the situation for us to be moving ahead on all of these things and then the school committee to say, wait a minute, we're either adding one more thing, which I guess wouldn't be problematic, or we're taking one away or something. So I think just as a matter of process, that's an important thing to bring back to this table. In terms of curriculum aspects of this, and maybe I'm misunderstanding, but I guess what I would ask again of the administration is, how is this coordinated with our normal curriculum assessment, our, you know, how is this all fitting together? Because you guys are basically working along what NIAS has instructed you to, and somehow as a system, we need to fit that all together into what the system needs to look like. So I guess I'm looking from a school committee perspective as a sort of upper level to say, how is this all being coordinated? Just so that we can make sure we're not dropping any, any components of what we're looking at.
Address the curriculum part.
Sure. As an example to that, on our October 5th professional development day, there were six through 12 teams that met. So Marilyn Decker met with the six through 12 team of all the science teachers. Barbara Wright and Amy Gale, Barbara of the high school and Amy at the middle school level for humanities, had the social studies and the English teachers meet to coordinate the curriculum from six through 12. So their assessments and their essential and guiding questions all matched and worked their way through from sixth grade to 12th grade. It was very nice as a parent to sit at open house at Pierce and hear Owen McElhany talk in eighth grade humanities, that his course goes to this level of the history line, and then they take this in ninth grade in modern world Civ, and they bring it to the next line. So that articulation of six through 12 and all the major subjects is very much part of the process, and NIAS doesn't make it anything different from what we've already done. NIAS is asking us the same question you are. How are you organizing this work? How is this work being done in a manner in which students can know and be able to do a set of skills and area of content consistent from grade to grade and work their way six through 12? So all the department heads are speaking and working and communicating to each other. I believe that the extra time that the high school is able to garnish from our half-day allocation will be utilized also by some of our middle school folks to make sure that that articulation is happening, and, but that is a big piece of what's happening in assessment and the curriculum, and I believe that it's all working and moving forward.
And then just going back to the assessment piece, we've talked about this, I think, a little bit at the elementary level, but to me, one of our obligations of sort of assessing how the system's going is not only look at end-of-year information, but getting some way of reporting out on those common assessments to make sure that throughout the year we're also moving, making progress on that. So I'm not sure what that looks like, but I would love to hear from you folks at some point in the future how you envision that.
And I think that you're going to be very impressed with the work in the last two years that's been done on end-of-unit, mid-year, final assessments, and Mrs. Kelly and I have discussed the work that's actually been done, benchmarking those against the actual MCAS scores, and so that we're all working, to your point, in the same direction.
Thank you.
Just comment.
Go right ahead.
And the other part of assessment that I think people don't look to and understand from outside the world of teaching and learning is that there's the informal assessment that happens in a classroom to check for understanding during a classroom period, during a week, and during a unit. And NIAS was very much on the cutting edge of talking about that with our staff, and those were already conversations that we were having. How do you know if a child is understanding the concept that you're teaching that minute that day? So part of that is, at the elementary school, we have clickers, so kids can actually click if they have a question right. The smart board prints out the results. Students not only raise their hand, but they might do a quick exit slip when they leave the class. Those types of assessments are equally as important as the MCAS assessment or the SAT assessment or the end-of-year final because it impacts the direct teaching the following day. That's how teachers differentiate the instruction when they can understand of the 20 students in front of them. I have five or six who are here, I have seven or eight who are here, and I have three or four who are here, and that allows them to navigate the teaching and learning a little differently and differentiate and engage all learners. So I think the public at home should understand that when we say assessment, we mean all those things. So a little exit slip when you leave your Spanish class, what did you learn today, is a form of assessment that the teacher takes and looks and reflects on her practices that day, and may change the direction of her instructions slightly to incorporate some of the aspects of the lesson that may not have been engaged by the students. So all good things happening. Teachers are aware of all those types of assessments and working them through, and that's a big piece of the differentiation and engaging of all students.
Miss Kelly.
And definitely out there, there are systems that are more technologically based that are, homework is the lesson plan presented, and then the classroom is the review, whether it's the homework in class or however it works, the assessment, so then you can fine-tune within that, you know, the groupings you talked about. So for us to think about that kind of environment and using the technology that we're hoping to get, et cetera, would be a great place to be.
Agreed. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret Gibbons, James Jett. We'll move on now to John Phelan's has prepared an MCAS. Do you want to, you know, if I might ask out of turn here to reverse, we have Dr. Karen Spalding with us tonight. Dr. Spalding, do you want to join us at the table? Thank you for coming out tonight. We have two initiatives that have been, we've been working on within the district, a middle school sports program and a seventh-grade elective initiative. I'm going to ask Mr. Phelan and Dr. Spalding to share these two initiatives with the school committee and the public. They have heard some of the information around these two programs, but again, to share them publicly tonight. Thank you.
Sure. I'd like to welcome Dr. Spalding from the middle school. The first of the two presentations I'd like to start with would be the middle school sports program. As the former principal of the middle school, we have always been trying to engage students after school in hopes that that also engages them during the school day. That started with club activities and sports, chess club, drama, intramural sports in the gymnasium and out in the fields, school newspaper, computer club, et cetera. We have intermittently provided some other clubs and some sports to try to compete with different schools across the South Shore and Milton area to create some pride amongst the students around their school and their, in their school system. With support from member Leroy Walker, Steve Shapiro, who's a friend and partner with Pinnacle Learning to the Milton Public Schools, Steve Traster, our athletic director, we sat down and started to try to formalize how we could come up with a plan to introduce intramural, I mean, interscholastic sports to the Pierce community at no cost to the district. In your packet was a memo that was drafted on October 19th. It has been briefly discussed with some members and was on the, on the agenda for our sub-finance committee, but has not been fully discussed at that venue, but we wanted to bring it to people's attention tonight. Do you have a copy of this? The memo that was written outlined a mission that we would like to have for the program, which is to start an interscholastic athletic program for the middle school. The objectives were to build school spirit, promote active student athletes, to promote a positive culture at the Pierce through school sports, and to provide a link to Milton High School through its athletic programs. I think everybody in the community would know that if you play the violin, or you're in drama, or you're in music, and you're at the elementary or middle school, we assume that we are getting almost 100% of those students at the high school, and we'd like to see our student athletes follow suit. On the next page of the proposal, we outline the funding sources that we have in place to support fielding three teams, three seasons worth of teams for boys and girls at the middle school. The funds are from Steve Shapiro, the Milton Foundation for Education, some of the funds that have been dedicated to clubs and activities at Pierce that have been reallocated, and a slight user fee that would be charged to student athletes that is similar right now to the club fee that students already pay. Outlined in that funding proposal is a three-year plan that we hope to be able to provide these athletic opportunities to students, again, at no cost to the district, and while we do so over the next three years, hope to garner some support amongst the school committee to provide some support in the budget, moving it forward into year four and five and beyond. The third page of the proposal outlines some of the initial costs of each of the sports that will be provided to the student body. Some of these costs will be annual, and some of these costs are startup costs, but we treated them all like they would be in the budget for each of the three years, just an error on the side of caution. And as you can see, Steve Traster has done a great job of treating these middle school sports like he would the high school varsity sports, and thought of every detail from score books to referees to buses to uniforms, to whistles, to nets and referees. So we have what we think is a proposal that has a lot of detail. We have a proposal that is self-funded, thanks to the Milton Foundation and Steve Shapiro from Pinnacle Learning, and we hope to follow through with our mission and our objectives of creating school spirit, providing an active student body around student athletes, and promote a positive culture for the middle school students and link them to the high school. So we ask you to entertain this proposal as it is at no cost to the taxpayer at this time.
Sure.
So for the viewing public, I think it would be helpful if you could outline what the different sports are, Mr. Phelan.
Sure.
Please.
We would like to provide, in this school year, boys and girls basketball, and again, we have had boys and girls basketball compete against other schools and towns in previous years with donated money from a private donor. In the spring, we'd like to do a spring track team with boys and girls. They'll be able to practice at the high school. They will work under the direction of their own coach, but they'll work in affiliation with the high school staff as well. And next year, we would like to, in the fall, have a cross-country team. So essentially, we'll have cross-country in the fall, basketball in the winter, and winter, spring track in the spring. It should also be stated that member Sheridan has an interest in our wrestling program at the high school. We do have a high school wrestling club that meets and supports our middle school students who participate on a voluntary basis. It's running so well, we didn't want to get in the way of it. It actually supports a lot of students who participate in wrestling as an activity. The high school students are the ones to work with us, our middle school folks. They don't compete interscholastically, but they do get to learn the craft of wrestling. They get to buy into the program, and it's a great feeder program for our high school wrestling team, which has gone from, I believe, eight members four years ago to some robust number of over 40 the last couple of years. So we're very excited to support that as well.
Sharon, you have?
I just have a follow-up question that hadn't come to me before tonight's presentation. I know that we do rent out the middle school gym, don't we, for different events?
Very limited amount.
Okay, so the gym is limited. I was just wondering if this would by any chance interfere with any of that scheduled time for rentals?
The only schedule that interferes at the basketball season, that the high school freshman teams come down and practice at the middle school. So Steve Traster is working with the high school coaches and the middle school coach to make sure that there's enough time for all folks to practice.
If I might, Dr. Spalding, would you share with the school committee and the public when you were appointed to the Pierce school and you did your interviews with different parents, and you gave us feedback from your site council about these two issues? It was very powerful and poignant. Do you want to share that input?
Absolutely. Should I just describe the other initiative first and?
We'll do the sports first.
With the sports piece? So the, the feedback has been overwhelmingly positive for a variety of reasons. The, you know, those who have in their own lives participated in team sports know all of the benefits that come along with that, a sense of pride, a sense of team building, a sense of belonging to something, developing skills individually and seeing how those play out and contribute to a group goal. And so all of the families that I've spoken to and the students now as well are extremely excited about it, both for what it brings to those 12, because it is only 12 students that end up on the, on the boys' team or the girls' team. However, the impact that it provides or gives to a school is tremendous, and in terms of engaging families, it's yet another and a different way that families can connect because they come out for the games to root for their, their children or their neighbors' children, and, and so there are multi-layers in terms of the positive benefits for team sports at the school, and we're very excited.
And on the flip side of that, the track will enable an unlimited number of boys and girls.
Absolutely, absolutely, and we had many meetings and conversations about precisely that. How can we create a variety of avenues and a variety of ways in which kids can participate in sports and open them up, open those slots up to many students? And that's precisely how track got into the conversation because that's unlimited in terms of the number of kids who can participate.
Mr. Walker, then Ms. Kelly.
Ms. Kelly, I think, was first.
This is an exciting idea, but I'm looking at the numbers, and quite frankly, I don't understand them. So I think I understand the costs. I would- I would like to know, how many students are we thinking will be involved in this program? We have, how many kids at the middle school this, you know, this year?
Eight hundred sixty.
Okay, and this program is being set up for about how many?
Well, the best, boys' basketball and girls' basketball, that's a total of 24 students, because you would have, you would carry 12 on each team. The track, however, is, you could carry as many as were interested, a far greater number, because they would participate in meets, so they're, they're not, I guess, we wouldn't take all 860 of them to a meet, however, a far greater number than, than the boys' basket, than a boys' basketball team or a girls' basketball.
So, 50, I mean, I'm just trying to get a ballpark.
We actually, we budgeted for 30 to 50 students per track season.
Okay. And then, is there already a middle school interscholastic, is there like a league or something we would join? What's, what is that? Because I know we, we've done basketball games against, I don't know who, Quincy? I'm not sure.
Quincy, so in the past, we, we had what we would consider just non-league games against some of the Quincy middle schools. We played Braintree, and we played Randolph. The, the difference this time is that we're utilizing Steve Traister as the athletic director, who went to the Bay State League Athletic Directors Meetings, solicited data from them as to who had middle school teams and in what sports. You would be surprised to know that the majority of the Bay State League teams do have middle school sports, and a whole lot more than this. They have basketball, baseball, lacrosse, boys' and girls' soccer, some have ice hockey. These are all public middle schools. So, we have been able to plug into the Bay State League schedule in, in these sports, and Steve is working through his athletic director and Bay State League sources to provide contests in each one of these sports.
And so, how many games or?
We don't know yet. It's all, it's all in the works. We believe about no more than 10 to 12 basketball games, because we are limited by transportation and cost, et cetera. But, we're starting off in a very small way with just about 10 or 12 games for a middle school basketball team.
So, so he's, the way I understood, Mrs. Kelly, he's going to work to create a schedule of track and basketball.
Right, I was just trying to get an understanding. I mean, what we did before was maybe three or four games at that, right? And now, this is being expanded. And so, will there be additional cost for the athletic league component of it?
No. So, in the budget that we had presented on page three, it's 10 games, five of which would be home games, 10, five of which would be away games. So, we budgeted for five buses for five away games. We would pay the referees for the five home games. He is working that schedule now. He actually gave an updated, an update on the schedule via email, I think just yesterday. I did not happen to see exactly what the teams were and when the games were, but the season will follow the high school season. It will start after the Thanksgiving break, just like the high school season does, and we will work again through the Bay State League Athletic Directors to secure games and matches.
And so, they'll not only have meets or games, but they'll also have practices presumably?
Correct. Not, and, not in an as intense manner as a high school sport would be. They won't practice every day.
Yep.
They might practice two to three days pending if they have a game that week.
And then, over on the resource side, so MFE has allocated $7,000 in the first row there that we're, we're expending out over three years. Is that, am I understanding that correctly, or?
I should, I should, I'm going to make an edit. The, the funds, the $7,000 on the top row is a donation from Steve Shapiro. Those funds were from the Saturday program that he has done for us over the last two years, and will do again this year. The money that was paid to him to do that program, he is donating back to the school. The $10,000 from the MFE after-school grant, that was a celebration item that Mr. Jett, when principal at the Pierce, asked for. He was waiting to expend that, and we are expending that sum as well. The $7,700 is a reallocation of club funds, which would be there every year. If you notice, the first two amounts, because they are grant-funded, I expended portions of them in each of the three years to kind of stretch them out over the three years. The club's reallocation money would stay there each year. The user fee would stay there each year. It may even go up if we decide that $35 may be a small fee. And we have provided the other, the other amounts as well. So, basically, we're trying to go from a balance of grant money and hard money to eventually more hard money if we can garner in a budget, and if we can continue to raise money through different fundraising sources. But, we, we wanted to provide a three-year plan, so people wouldn't think that this is going to be a stop-start initiative, that three years would give us solid footing to no fee, to the added fee to the taxpayer, and, and put us on solid ground.
And so, the club's reallocation, what was that money being spent on previous to this proposal?
The, the clubs that were not being used each year, two of those were music clubs that the current band director was not utilizing. There are two student government clubs that were in the budget, but only one has run historically, which is the student leadership. We didn't do student government, there was student leadership and student government. So, student leadership is always run. Mr. McElhenney has always had the eighth-grade president, treasurer, et cetera. So, basically, Dr. Spalding went through, over the last few years, what clubs have been running and what clubs have not, and pulled those funds and added them up and totaled them for us to be able to use and reallocate.
Okay, the only reason I bring it up is we definitely have a club gap in terms of our expenditures and our resources allocated to it every year. And we, to my knowledge, and Mr. Walker, maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, we haven't bridged that gap yet. So, I guess I have a concern about how real that dollar amount is in the grand scheme of our, our whole budget. But I, I mean, this is an amazing job at trying to pull together resources to create a program that will obviously benefit a lot of kids. How is this being communicated? It sounds like we're starting basketball, and how?
Before we go on to that?
Yeah, I mean, we were talking about 24K, I guess, those are the kinds of things that drive me crazy at a middle school level. Similarly, at a lower, is that we're saying, you're going to have tryouts, is that what it is essentially? And it's not first come, first served? How is that all going to work? You know, that's the kind of stuff that, where it was intramural, I'm not sure even how that worked, but that seemed like it was fair, and if you really wanted to play basketball, regardless of your skill level, that you were able to participate. So, those kinds of things are things that concern me a little bit.
And we have after-school sports Monday through Thursday, so that's every day for an hour after school, and that's open to students in grades six, seven, and eight. And, so they began the year doing floor hockey, I believe, and they'll be moving on to basketball. So, there'll be an intramural opportunity for the team, for the interscholastic play. The team will have tryouts, it'll be targeted for eighth graders in the beginning. But we do plan on structuring and creating that opportunity for sixth graders and seventh graders as well, within that intramural program, to sort of be a feeder into this potential team, so that there's still that opportunity for other students who, you know, just want to play some basketball, but might not be the star, a potential star on the team.
Right.
Yeah.
And then, just one more thing. So, how does the fee compare to what present sort of after-school club fees, or, or even the class fees are that we presently have at the middle school? Is it in line? Is it a little bit less, a little bit more?
It, it's in line with the fee for the past classes. So, currently, we have, we run our past classes in six-week sessions, and a session is six weeks long. And we actually restructured that this year to give students an opportunity to try something for a short amount of time, instead of committing to a full year, which is difficult, because they have so many other things going on. So, past class is $35, which is in line, so we lined it up. And then, the club fee, which is a little bit different, is $75 for the year. And so, there's before-school and after-school clubs.
Mr. Walker, you have a question?
Not a question, compliment. This is, I, I'm really excited about this, because this is an idea that we have been talking about for quite a while now, and it's a perfect example of, you start talking about a good idea and watch it evolve and be brought to fruition. And I have to single out Mr. Phelan and Mr. Traister, who've been a part of these conversations from the very beginning. They've done an outstanding job of, of making this work. And of course, our ever-present benefactor, Steve Shapiro, who continues to do great things for the schools. And Ms. Kelly, I had the same concern that you did about access and participation. Mr. Shapiro, as you know, has a background in basketball, so he was willing to donate some money for a basketball program, and we asked Steve Traister to explore that. He, we wanted it to be competitive, we wanted to be able to compete against other schools, and Steve was able to talk to other programs, and it looks like we will have a schedule where we're competing. I raised the, the same concern about the number of kids that would be able to participate, and that's why we wanted to make sure that, we also coupled it with track, so that there's an opportunity for kids to participate there. So, I think we, we've got a good balance of a program where it's going to be competitive, there will be tryouts, and good preparation for moving to the high school program. And at the same time, both in the spring and the fall, we have a program where as many kids as possible, within some limitations, can participate as well. So, for, for a start, I think this is absolutely fabulous. It's cost-neutral, it provides broad access, and it creates a program at the middle school that I think is going to generate quite a bit of school spirit. So, nice job.
Absolutely. Ms. Padere.
I think you answered part of my question, because I was wondering, for the basketball teams, is it for the whole school, or is there one for each grade? But it's just for the eighth grade, the team is initially?
Yes.
But will there be a time, if we do tryouts, I mean, that you have a standout seventh grader that wants to participate and can try out, or a standout sixth grader? Will they all be able to try out, or is it just eighth grade?
To begin, it will just be eighth grade, and, you know, we, we still have some, some questions and things to iron out and think about in terms of the structure, to see how it works, and, and what is it going to look like even within the intramural to have that structure? But for now, it's, it's tryouts at the eighth grade level.
Okay, and, but the track and the cross-country program will be for all grades?
We could open that up to all grades.
To participate?
Yeah.
Okay, all right, that was my question.
Ms. Kelly. Mr. Walker, sorry.
Just I'll put out, I think it's fabulous. I think we really have to work on trying to get funding for it. My concern is, similar with what's happening with clubs, and, and all fairness, what's happening with sports, we are not meeting from, from fees, et cetera, that, you know, the cost of those programs. And the more you introduce that, the more, unless we have other big-picture ways of doing things, we're cutting into other mainstays of our budget. And, you know, in Milton, either we find ways to fix that, or we have to be creative, or we have to be cautious. And I guess that's the only thing that I'm presenting. I am a little concerned about the club allocation, because I know at the high school, we're not meeting our needs for clubs, right? So, the money's going to come from somewhere within our budget, and essentially, it's coming out of something. So, I think we need to be really cautious about this.
Mr. Walker, you have a comment?
So, I have one thing now, I have two, because, Ms. Kelly, you and I are immersed in the, the budget detail and the budget challenges that we have, so I, I think you're exactly right. We, we have a sports program overall that includes several different funding sources, so we have fundraising, we have fees, and we have some money from the general fund. And I, I think we all agree, and we should say to the public once again, that that, that is not an adequate funding model for the future. So, we'll, we'll have to figure out how to solve that problem. I, I think with this particular program, weighing some of those potential concerns in the future, the fact that, that Mr. Phelan has been able to come up with a program that for three years provides funding, I think gives us some opportunity to think about that. But I wanted to come back to the question Ms. Padere asked. We talked a little bit about the basketball program, and we are still working out those details, because we talked about potentially holding one, two, or three spots for sixth or seventh graders on each team each year or so, and we still need to work that out. So, that, that is a possibility.
And if I might, not being an athlete and seeing athletics at Milton High School, I've often said to the athletic director and central office and the administration that there might, I had the same feeling as you as basketball, so I was happy about the track, thinking 200 children might go out for it. But the pride, I believe, that the rest of the school have in their team and attending the games and develop a pride in the continuum of the K-12 school system will be a very unique opportunity for the Pierce school, and very, very, very exciting. So, I'm hoping, not being an athlete, that watching Milton High School, when there's a game, or they got into the tournament, or they went into play, that I often said, I think the other 999 think they're on the team. So, I think that we'll see that kind of response with the feedback that we have gotten on a limited basis about this initiative with parents at Pierce School.
Ms. Kelly.
Just in terms of watching the games, if I remember correctly, the Pierce gym is very difficult to have any amount of people be there to watch. So, I don't know whether any of the other gyms are more conducive to that, besides the high school, which obviously has a big draw in terms of scheduling. But I'm wondering if we might try and consider something. I don't know what it would be, but it's really difficult to watch a game in that gym, and not be killed by the ongoing running of, of players, so.
The, the, the benefits of that is when you, when you're playing the opposing team, they're in a real bond, and so they really get intimidated. So, it's really a, at Pierce Middle School, to have the crowd right on them, it's like, it's like playing at Camden Arena or Duke. It's, it's a little different. So, that's, that's strategic and purposeful.
There you go. I, I have no idea.
I don't know if we can change that, that's.
And I too want to recognize Steve Traister, John Phelan, Leroy Walker, and Dr. Spalding in her first year as principal, jumping into this. And as I led her into, and she'll share with you in her entry plan, when she sat down with the site council and parents, you should be given a tremendous amount of credit, because you came forward and said, this is what I'm hearing, this is what parents want for their children at the Pierce School. So, to all of you, and to the MFE for that celebration funds for after-school activities, and to Pinnacle Learning, and Steve Shapiro, we couldn't do it, as Ms. Kelly noted, without benefactors. Good work.
Thank you. So, we'd also like Dr. Spalding to talk a little bit about a program that you would, that she would like to begin and pilot at the middle school for seventh-grade students as an elective course, and I'd like to have her explain that for us.
Would it be okay if I pass this?
Sure, I'll do it for you.
So, this, in my mind, fits in with the conversation we just had about the sports at the Pierce Middle School, because the way, the conversations we've been having and the way I sort of think about middle school is that it's both an opportunity for students to really try a variety of different things and figure out which ones for them and which they're good at and which they like. Well, at the same time, we have to provide opportunities for students who have figured that out a little bit. So, they've, they've figured out what they're particularly interested in or talented at doing. And so, what you have in front of you is a draft of a letter for parents, and the idea for an intensive course in science, technology, engineering, and math at the middle school level came actually within a, there were two events that happened within a, literally within a 24-hour period that led to that. I was here one evening in the summer, and third-grade teacher, Tanya Walsh, was being recognized and described the flexible grouping enrichment opportunity structure that she had been very involved in developing, and, and all of the benefits that came with that. And then, the next morning, had a meeting with parents, where one parent described to me how her son keeps a journal, and throughout the summer was observing fireflies, and on his own, taking incredibly detailed notes of these fireflies, and how much time passed between when they blinked, and then started recording the temperature to see if that somehow was related. And so, listening to that story, said to myself, what do we have for that kid? What do we have for that student, for that child, who on his own has filled pages and pages of a journal recording fireflies? So, of course, I asked about moon phases, and that's what he had done last summer. He had recorded the moon every evening in a variety of ways. So, those two events, this idea of being flexible- So those two events, this idea of being flexible in our thinking about programming, and what are we doing for that student? That student who is particularly artistic, we have the ACE program. That student who's particularly musical, we have honors chorus. That student who maybe shows a talent in sports or track, might be on the track team. And so this is a little bit of a risk-taking in terms of creating an opportunity, a pathway, for those students who might have a particular interest in the field, in the STEM field, so science, technology, engineering, and math. So the structure would be, there would be a total of 40 students. We have 40 slots. There were 51 sixth graders who scored, which is very exciting, who scored advanced in mathematics last year, as sixth graders are now seventh graders. And so the invitation would go to that group of students initially. And the course intentionally is taking place during their elective period, because we're still committed to having conversations around differentiation, having conversations about rigor in the classroom during that regular math, regular math class, but the, sort of during the team time math class and science class. Still committed to doing all of those things, figuring out how to meet the needs of the range of learners within the classroom, but also acknowledging that there are some kids who are just really, 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 really interested in science, technology, engineering, and math, just like there are students who are really, really interested in music, or art, or something else. And so the content for this course is focused on the physics of light, and we, I've been working with Jennifer Gilbert, who's the eighth-grade science teacher. We did some restructuring in the schedule to allow for her to teach this class to seventh graders. And so she and I have been working together, planning to develop this course that would create opportunities for students to work in a hands-on way, collecting initially qualitative data, and then shifting to quantitative data around the physics of light and optics, and related topics. And students, if they opted for this course, they would be required to submit a project to the Pierce Science Fair, which will be happening in February, on February 28th, in time for any really good projects to potentially go to the state science fair. And so it's, again, this opportunity to just really create a class where students who have a particular interest or affinity for that area, to really push themselves in a different way, in a different space.
Ms. Padera.
So you said there are 51 students who invited, but there's 40 spots, so, but it sounds like through the letter, they're invited, they're in, in a way. Is that?
Yes, it's, it's, the class is being offered during their elective time.
Okay.
So they will have to give up one of their electives, and we're speculating that there'll be some who are in an elective, you know, who might also be music students, or, you know, something else, who might not want to give up that elective. So the thinking is just by, that that would probably reduce the numbers to about 40?
Okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Other questions?
So, it's been a while since my kids were in middle school. What are the other elective, so if you're a music student, you would be having music every other day, right? What other, and then of course, there's gym, right? What are some of the choices, I guess, that parents are going to have to make for their children, I guess?
Absolutely. So chorus might happen during that time, computer class, physical education, art class, drama, a couple of varieties of drama, and so classes like that.
But not foreign language?
Not foreign language, no.
And, I'm sorry, but in eighth grade, is there an addition, there's an additional class in French in what grade at the middle school?
Eighth.
Seventh and eighth.
Seventh and eighth grade.
So potentially, they would have to make that choice as well? Is that what we're saying? That would be one of the choices that they might have to?
Yeah, and the class is meeting, so it will meet every other day, which is how we're able to accommodate the 40, so, which is why we're looking for them to indicate at the bottom which one they'd rather come out of, so that if there is, for example, a French humanities in that slot, they could opt for the other day.
Yep, Ms. Kelly.
I mean, I'm very excited about this, because this is, you know, this is something I think that we definitely need. I guess, again, I'll ask the system question. How do we assess the success of this, this new class? What, after they've experienced this in eighth grade, do we have to offer them in the ninth grade? Again, I think pilots are great things. I think we need to protect, to present a context, not that necessarily that's on you, but as a system, the context into which we're laying this, so that we're prepared. I mean, some of the feedback that we've gotten from parents on STEM is, where does this come from? I never, this is the first thing I'm here about it. What are you doing with it? So I think it's fantastic. I just think we need to connect some of those dots and present the big picture for people, so that they understand what the system is doing, not being reactionary, but being proactive about what we're doing.
So we want to share with you what's going on? Want to share?
So we have a STEM committee, that's a district-wide committee, that's been led by Drew Eccleston, our Glover principal. On it will be Dr. Karen Spalding and Marilyn Decker, as well as teacher representatives from each grade level, to talk about what the articulation of STEM opportunities in science and math, the curriculum going from K to 12. We believe that we have, as you have said, junctures of good stuff that happen at each grade, but I think that the STEM program in first grade has really energized the teachers, the staff, and the students around the area of STEM, which is science, technology, and engineering and math, that incorporates a lot of different skill sets that will see benefits in other areas of their school day, communicating, writing, which would be the humanities, the math is the math, the engineering, the hands-on pieces of it. So we're hoping to put together for the school committee to review an articulation of what that service and delivery would look like in terms of curriculum and other types of activities, i.e. we have a fantastic robotics team at the high school, which started at the middle school. We now have the STEM with the We Do Legos in the first grade, so we will articulate that process through, that that's the charge of the committee. We are also having a separate technology committee that has been a result of the different goals that we have as a district around the infrastructure and the use of technology in classrooms, so that's a second committee that's being put together, all of which will work at certain points together, and then in parallel. So we're very excited about those two avenues that we are exploring with committees that are meeting that have K to 12 visions as their charge.
Mr. Walker, then Ms. Padera.
I want to hear what Ms. Kelly has to say.
So, then the other thing that pops into my head is, we're now making this a, you have to prove your success in a given subject area before we're allowing, now, maybe this is just in the pilot phase, but again, these are the kind of questions that I would ask. We have AP courses that we don't have any prerequisite for, which we believe as a educational community is a great thing to do, and yet, we're creating programs that are sort of siphoning off in kids, and kids that maybe have expressed, you know, incredible interest, but can it also be for kids that express interest, but maybe haven't proven themselves in the MCAS environment, right? So those are the kind, another component of this that concerned me. So maybe if we can hear about what would year two of this look like? Could it be more open and available to kids who want to experience that?
All children.
To all children, exactly. Whatever it is, as an elective, that they could, you know, choose like anything else, so.
I think for the past few years, we've been really looking at our elective block as somewhere where we can address not just electives that may be performing arts and physical education, but also different types of academic electives, similar to what they have at the high school, where they have debate, which is out of the humanities, they have speech, or, so we do believe that we need to be creative with the elective offerings, and this would be the first venture into doing so at the middle school.
Right. And so, in that we're creating a pilot, that's to engage students that have proven themselves, how then do we relook at it and say, well, maybe it's not, maybe it needs to be differentiated in what, with what's being presented, similar to any other class that we would be teaching, right? So that we can still meet everyone at where they're at. It becomes a little bit, you know, as anything, it becomes much more difficult for the teacher in the classroom, but then we're trying to spark those interests in all kids at their level, wherever they are.
Mr. Walker, then Ms. Padera.
So, we had an extensive discussion about this at the finance committee. Sorry, we missed you. And this, I think, I think we have to have multiple strategies and multiple approaches. And this is a program where we have 40 seats, and we talked about what's the fairest way to allow students to participate in that program. And it seemed to me that you have students who have already, not because they thought they were earning anything, but you have students who have achieved the advanced level on an MCAS exam. And it seems to me that those are, that's the group, or that's the population you should start with. If we could create, and if we will create, a much broader program with much broader access, then the criteria might be different. But for this, where you have 40 places, and you've got 51 students that achieved advanced, seems to me you have to start with that group.
Again, this is a pilot program, and from my perspective, if this is the way you've chosen to introduce it, fine. I just want to see what's the longer-term vision, because I, like I said, as this educational community, we're saying, we don't want to see that leveling. I think NIOSC is saying, we don't want to see that leveling. We want to see every child being engaged in a particular subject at where they are along the continuum and growing, so.
But I think it's important to recognize that in math, in science, in English, and in social studies, all students will be engaged in that manner. That this isn't in lieu of a child science class, this isn't in lieu of one of their core classes, that all core classes are approached in just that manner. So we are very aware that we're striking a balance between making sure that we engage all learners in the core curriculum, in the standards that we are to adhere to with the state and the common core, and make sure everybody is scaffolding that learning to meet the standard. But this is a chance for us to see and have somewhat of a competitive process to get in, that is done in a pilot form, that can be considered healthy to some and restrictive to others. But the pilot will be part of the, this pilot will be a component of the larger K-12 science and engineering conversation that we have through the committee. But I think it's, with limited resources and limited time, in pilot being the operative word, I think that this is the best way to move forward in year one.
And, Mrs. Kelly, my charge to the group working on the STEM K through 12 is that all children are going to be exposed to all programs. And so this is a pilot, and again, we're going to come up with ways to evaluate the pilot, looking at our budget, how we, that's going to be a huge part of this STEM committee, how we roll out our initiatives, what initiatives we select, and how all children's education will be enhanced.
Mr. Walker, were you done?
I'm done.
Padera, and then I'll come back to Ms. Kelly.
Well, just my comment went back to measurement, and so I was going to say that I think it's an excellent idea to make the students, as part of the class, participate in the science fair. I mean, might not, it's a form of measurement in showcasing what the students are doing, especially showcasing for the school and parents, and I think that'll do wonders in terms of educating parents for what the class actually is. But I agree, I mean, I'd love to see it open to everybody, but you're right, I mean, it's a pilot year, and I do think it builds interest in just being an invitation, too. It makes it something very special, that students were, you know, asked to be in, and that'll create a buzz, and hopefully create interest, which will hopefully build it further, so.
Kelly.
So then, just one other question I have. I apologize for going on and on. Ms. Gilbert, the eighth-grade science teacher, is now not teaching classes for those two classes, or we're, how is that working?
We reconfigured her schedule to, so that she could teach five sections of students within four sections, and so the class sizes are still, we have a particularly small eighth grade this year, and so her class sizes are still around 20, 21. And so that freed her up in the G-period to take on this class.
Great.
Thank you.
Anything else on this?
Just to be clear, so that means that it's at no cost to the district? So there's no added cost to pilot this program?
Yes, that's what I interpreted.
Be explicit with the public. So it's been able to provide two middle school programs to the public this year at no cost to the budget, and to the public reallocating resources to try to bring new opportunities to the Pierce students. So thank you, Dr. Spalding.
And, and they have this phenomenal science administrator as their consultant, who is also the principal. So that, too, is going to be at no cost to the district. You were probably thought that she was teaching the class, that's why we had to clarify. So enthusiasm, and you know what a nice offshoot, when I was talking about the athletics, Dr. Spalding shared with me that the whole, as Ms. Padera said, buzz, the talk among the teachers, the energy among the teachers in all the disciplines, looking to creative programming going forward, realizing our budget constraints, but looking at the staff we have, and how to most creatively provide for students. And I have to say to Dr. Spalding that, next to ordering a science fair, I said to John Phelan, nothing makes me happier than when Dr. Spalding said there'll be a science fair at Pierce School, and the timing of it, and then those science fair projects then can be entered at the state level. Something that will impact students the rest of their lives and their interest.
So is this the first time that there's a Pierce science?
And the, the science fair is, it's open to all students, and I will be hosting after-school sessions for each grade level, for kids who need some support getting started, and the science teachers are on board with it. They will, you know, do that work as well.
Which is what I was going to bring up. Quincy, with their science class, have students working on science projects as part of their class. Sometimes at the elementary level, in all honesty, we have science fairs, and really, they're not the kids' science fairs, they're the parents' science fairs, in all honesty. But it is amazing what I've seen in the Quincy elementary schools in terms of their science fair, and when you, the cross-disciplining, you know, create a product, how would you market it? I mean, amazing engagement in terms of combining science and all other kind of businesses, et cetera. It's fantastic. Terrific, kudos.
And so for those students, to your point, to go to MIT, and to see students from across the Commonwealth, and they have to stand up, I think it might be one of the highlights of the year. Thank you.
Ms. Sharon, you have it.
I'll just say very quickly, I just think this is the kind of creative, out-of-the-box thinking that we need, and that we benefit from, and I think it's wonderful. We're so happy to have you as the leadership, and look forward to this, more of this exciting news.
Thank you, Dr. Spalding.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Spalding. Now we're going to move on to MCAS presentation, which John Phelan is going to give.
Did we have an approximate timeline for tonight's meeting in mind? Just wondering.
Midnight.
Yeah, all the meeting law says we can't go past midnight.
Ms. Kelly, you could help us with that.
I'm sorry, Ms. Kelly, could what?
You could help us speed this up a little bit.
I'm sorry, you know, these are pretty important topics we're talking about.
The 58 slides intimidate you, Ms. Kelly, is it?
You know, I was breathing through this on my way back from DC today, and yikes.
So I'd like to thank the committee for your time for me to present the district view of the accountability data that we have from the 2012 spring administration of the MCAS exam. As you remember, we had a presentation with Courtney Walsh and myself to bring to the attention of you and the community, the new accountability system that the state is using. So I'll stop by reviewing some of that information, so we're all on the same page with the vocabulary and the accountability process. I will review also the status that we have achieved as the Milton Public School District in that of its six schools. We will go through some of the data from a district view, of the student growth data, and then the MCAS data, and talk about some of the challenges and some of the highlights of that data. We do have some subgroup information in this presentation, and I have also provided to the school committee some... the school committee some statistics and graphs of subgroup data information, although not polished and presentable at this time, I thought it was important to provide to you as a backdrop that you may see in your green folder, that we can discuss at future meetings. I know Superintendent Goleman, now that we have this new ability to, to access data through the state, is asking of the principals to drill down on this data for all students in this, especially our subgroup students and students who are not achieving to the acceptable level we feel they should, to use the statewide data portal to enhance student learning and, and the teaching in the classroom. So, first for the agenda, we'll go over the progress in the performance index, then we'll go over some of the highlights and challenges at the end, and we will talk about also other mechanisms that we use to measure success in the Milton Public Schools. As a review, there are major changes in how we report our scores to our parents. Courtney Walsh and I presented to you that the new terms that we'll be using for this process will be PPI, not AYP. The performance index is one that is calculated by various data sets that go in to formulate a score of one to a hundred for students, for schools, and for school districts. This new CPI data that's included will also involve our science scores, which they have not done in the past, and we will also be scored on our, not only all of our students, but new words for our subgroups, which are our high-needs, our high-needs district students. We will have a goal of a hundred percent, replacing the goal of reaching a hundred percent proficiency for our students, we will now reach a goal by 2017 of reducing proficiencies by half, and you'll see that formula as we go further on in the presentation. First and foremost, the Milton Public Schools is a Level One district. That designation has only been awarded to twenty-five percent of the districts across the state. We feel that is a significant achievement if we compare apples to apples. We feel that if all of our schools are Level One, which they are, and our district is deemed Level One, and we are in the top twenty-five percent of the state's school districts, we feel that that is an achievement that we take some pride in, knowing that there is some work underneath that to still do at all times. The CPI targets that you see on the chart in front of you represent the actual targets that we need to reach as a school district in ELA, which is the green line on top, in math, which is the blue line, and in science. Again, this is a differentiated scale. The school has, the, the state has used the 2011 MCAS scores to set this standard and project out that by 2017, if we are able to act, able to have students perform and make increments of success from ninety-three point five to ninety-four, for example, in ELA, that we will be on target to make this score of ninety-six point eight. It is not looking for all students to be one-hundred percent proficient, it is asking districts to work towards having their students have that process, so at least make it to that halfway point in each of the subjects. This type of articulation, or this line of, of scoring or targeting, is not only done for each district, it's done for each school, and it's done for each student, and it's done for each subgroup of students. So, literally, everybody, and we won't show you all of those lines tonight, but we will be asked to, when we talk about accountability and how will we measure success in the Milton Public Schools, the state is giving us a very clear formula for us to be able to measure ourselves against, with regards to our district, our schools, our grade-level students, and even subgroups of students within each grade. So, for example, when we look to, how will I know if we're making progress with students with disabilities? Well, there will be an articulation of target scores that we have to achieve for our students with disabilities. There'll be one with a separate line for students in subgroups such as Hispanic and/or African-American students. So, each one of our subgroups will have this type of line of expectation that we will target our success on. Yes, Ms. Kelly?
So, just, maybe I've missed something, but the numbers here are reflective, not of like, out of a hundred percent on a test, or are they?
They are not.
Okay. So, can we just explain, you know, what's, I know it gets complicated, but essentially, our target is to get everybody at proficiency?
Correct, so.
All of those subject areas, right?
In, in the, in the previous presentation, and I don't have the slide with me, I apologize, and I also don't have the math person in Courtney Walsh with me, so I'll do my best. We are measured in a rubric of points from zero to a hundred, and if all students were proficient, we would get a hundred. In between that, the school gets credit for the growth of each student, and it gets credit for their achievement level, which will, which you'll be able to see in futures, in a few slides. The combination or an algorithm that's developed that takes the student growth and the student's achievement level is what derives these, these targets that we shoot for. The reason why they're different is because when they looked at our scores for the last four years, that's how they developed what our base number was and what our targets would be in the future. So, this remains constant. This, this trajectory will remain constant until 2017, and that's what we will work towards. And this, this list of numbers that we start with is the actual result of the formula that they used when they plugged in our 2011 scores, and they, and they created this trajectory just for the Milton Public Schools, as they do for every school district in the Commonwealth.
And they weighted, they weighted this past year and the past four heavier than the other prior three years?
Right. We'll get into cumulative score and annual score, and then this is based on the cumulative score, which is a formula of weighing the pre, the most recent year's scores at a higher level, and then two years out, three years out, four years out are, carry less weight. But it's nice to be able to know that you're being judged on a body of four years' worth of data, not just one year's worth of data. So, we feel that that will suit the Milton Public Schools well as moving forward. Again, Level One is a school or a district scoring with a PPI of seventy-five or higher in both the aggregate and the high-needs group. So, if you remember in the past, we have always done well in the aggregate in the Milton Public Schools, we have never had a problem meeting our former AYP goals in the aggregate, but we had always, in some schools, had difficulty in some of those subgroups. So, now they have reconfigured the subgroups to represent, to be represented as high-needs group. The high-needs group are students who have the characteristics of being on an IEP and/or being an ELL student, which means they don't speak English, or their family does not speak English, and/or being from a low socioeconomic background, measured through the federal lunch program. Those are the three high-needs areas or the characteristics in a student that would put them in a high-needs group. The other subgroups that we will also monitor, i.e. African-American, Black, students who are Hispanic, Asian, the other subcategories of students that we have in the district, are also measured by themselves, but not in terms of the accountability levels, because their scores are in the all. Their scores are counted, they're part of the all. So, it's a different way of, a framework for how they measure districts, and that, this is the state's new formula. This is the list of subgroups that make up high needs, as I just said, students with disabilities, ELL students, and students from disadvantaged, economically disadvantaged homes, and this is the list of this, the subgroups that you can report out on if you have forty or more in your school, or if you have forty or more in your district. So, we will be able to have trajectory target dates, target scores for each one of these groups. So, when we get into the district, the district cumulative PPI, and Superintendent Goleman said, there are two PPI numbers that come to the district. One is, how did I do this year? And one is, how have I done over the last four years? And your level is derived from how have you done over the last four years. So, our 2012 scores were plugged into a formula that represented the heaviest weight, but they were also added on to our 2011 scores, our 2010 scores, and our 2009 scores. So, this is, represents a body of work over the last four years, and how the district has done in this new formula. So, they took all that old data, and they plugged it into this new formula, so everybody started off on the same playing field. So, this represents, and I apologize for the size of the screen, I thought it would show better, that this represents all students, and our all students in the district have scored a ninety-three on a scale of one hundred. So, all of our students across the district, measured from grade three to grade ten, the district has received a score of ninety-three students that are the score of all of our students. The high-needs students in our district, again, have passed that bar of seventy-five and scored an eighty-five on a scale of a hundred. We are very, very happy to know that those two scores are healthy, they surpassed the seventy-five benchmark, and that allows the district to be a Level One district. When you break out that information by subgroup, as it does below, our low-income students, our ELL students by themselves, they break them out in individual packages, and we have successfully navigated over the last four years, low-income students have passed that mark in the district, as our ELL students, as our students with disabilities, our, our Asian student population, our African-American Black population of the last four years collectively did not reach that mark. Our students who are multi-race, and our Hispanic students have made that mark, and our white students have as well. So, as a district, we see some very good scores, but we do see a target area of focus, which would be the African-American Black category. You will see as we go by school, that our schools have done very well in that category for the most part, and I do have some subgroup data in the back, in a, in a packet for you in your green folder, that gives you a little more information about our subgroups.
I'm sorry, can I just ask a question on the graph? So, on the, the previous page there, so the white, category white, a hundred percent of students met the target? No, what is it, what does that mean?
What that means is that when they measure each group, they add up how many students made proficient, what the formula, we enter in their, their CPI, which is what their advanced proficient or needs improvement score, we add in the student growth of those students, which is an annual growth number, and we also add in some extra credit for the student, or for the school, or for the district. If several, if, how many of your students went from proficient to advanced, you get extra credit, or how many students you moved from wanting to needs improvement. So, you're able to get points. So, that does not mean a hundred percent of the students who are Latino made proficient. That means that in the formula of all those different pieces of data, when they add them up with their algorithm, that they have achieved a hundred on a scale of one to a hundred in terms of success. That does not mean that a hundred percent of those students have achieved proficient or advanced. That type of data, and looking at and unlayering that, we will do to a small degree here, but the schools will do to a more deeper extent when they present to each of you at their turn throughout the fall. So, similar, each school has their own chart, and the reason why there's not as many blue lines is that not every school has forty or more students in each one of those subcategories. So, for the Colicott School, which was, which was commended, and we'll get into that later, by the state, we have a ninety-eight score of a score from one to a hundred for all students, and an eighty-eight for students on IEPs. The students with disabilities taken out by themselves was a ninety-six, and students who were white scored a hundred out of a hundred points. So, that does not mean that there are not students who may be in those other categories in the school, but it, what it means is it's not forty or more students in those categories in the school. That is why the district score looks different than the school's scores individually. The Cunningham School has a relatively similar makeup. The all students scored a hundred on their one-to-one-hundred scale. Our students on IEPs, or all-needs students, scored an eighty-eight. Our students with disabilities scored a hundred on their point scale this year, cumulatively over the last four years, and our students in the, in the white subgroup scored one hundred as well. The, it should be said, and I know Member Kelly tried to clarify how this formula is derived, we provided a nice, and it's on the website still, there is very good State Department guidelines and resources for families and educators and school committees to go on if they would like to further explore how that formula is made up and exactly what it means, and if it, if it would be something that would be, benefit the group, I can come back with a more detailed review of that formula, because sometimes these scores, people will leave with, does that mean a hundred percent of the students did get proficient or advanced? And it does not mean that. However, what it does mean is that the state put forward a formula that ranks and scores and accounts for every child, and it rates schools and students, and grades of students in districts, and we have achieved the highest level in a lot of these areas. The Tucker School, all students did meet the mark with a seventy-eight, all students in high-needs met the mark with a seventy-eight, all of our low-income students met the mark with a seventy-eight, our students in the African-American Black category more than met the mark at the Tucker with an eighty-nine, and our students in the white subgroup were, made the mark with a score of one hundred. At the Pierce Middle School, because there's more students, and all students are graded at the middle school, you see that we have a lot more of the subgroups represented in this chart. At the Pierce Middle School, ninety percent of all students, excuse me, ninety, a score of ninety-two for all students was achieved on that scale of one to a hundred. Our high-needs students, which were formerly our subgroups, scored an eighty-two on that scale of a hundred. Our low, our low-income students were one point shy of making that seventy-five mark, and again, this is over the last four years, not just last year. Our students with disabilities had the mark of eighty-nine, which I would like to say out loud, is our students with disability subgroup has shown great progress over these last four years. Our students that make up the Asian subgroup scored a ninety-one, our students African-American Black made the mark with a seventy-six, Hispanic-Latino students with a mark of a hundred, and our students in the white category a ninety-five. At Milton High School, we have a ninety-seven for all, an eighty-seven for our high-needs, a one-hundred score for our low-income, a seventy-eight score for our students in the African-American Black, and a hundred score for our students in the white category. So, again, these are very, a very overarching view of the scores. We encourage parents who received one of these report cards for their child and their school and the district back in October, to review that material, to go on the website that we have in Milton Public Schools, to access any of the links to the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, if they would like to read more as to how these scores are calculated. But the, feel confident that the Milton Public Schools feels the, the need to say out loud that apples to apples, we feel that our district overall did well, and we applaud the state in this new formula, and we also applaud the state in allowing the districts to access a lot more data than they have in the past, that will allow us to really dig and drill down into why aren't certain subgroups of students learning, what is some of the background that we need to know, where are our students not making the mark in terms of points in our curriculum, types of questions that are asked, and who these students are in general, that we need to approach and make sure that we're engaging in an appropriate way. Because we are doing well, and we're a Level One district, does not mean to say out loud that there's not area for improvement, especially in pockets of the district and the district overall. The next way we'd like to reflect the data is just to go back to two quick slides on our student growth percentile that we'd like to provide. This is an overview of the district. So, you remember this, this form where we're measured on student achievement on the vertical axis, and we're measured on student growth on the horizontal axis. So, anything on the student growth that's inside this quadrant or beyond is excellent. So, everything over here is exactly where we want to be. So, we have student growth for all of our schools, except for the Pierce and the High School, which, which right in the zone of the, the state says where we should be. We have the district hedging on much better than the state says we should be, and we have all four of our elementary schools experiencing student growth beyond the expectation of the state, which we're very excited about. This is an ELA chart, so this represents the collective English-language art scores of the entire district by school. The reason why there may not be as much student growth up here at the High School and Pierce is because they're already at that level of, of success, and I might not be a hundred percent correct, but my layman's terms is you can't get much more water out of that rock when you have, if you look down at the High School, you have ninety-six percent of your students in advanced or proficient in ELA. So, there's not much more room to eke out student growth when the growth is already sustained at a high level. room to eke out student growth when the growth is already sustained at a high level as it has been there. So, we're very excited about our elementary growth. We're very excited about the growth of the district in English Language Arts. Again, this number represents the student growth percentile, and this number represents the CPI, or the percentage of students who have proficient and/or higher in their ELA examination. The next one is the district view of the math, a similar-looking chart, which we are excited to show. We have all of our schools in the, either in the zone of appropriate or beyond in terms of its student growth. Anything over the 60 mark is considered a very good feat for each school by the state. The district being right on that mark, again, as being on the high end, is a substantial accomplishment. And we have the High School here, again, very high up in the achievement, which leaves very little room for growth as they have 88% of their students in the proficient or advanced mark. And when you see those scores individually, you'll see that most of that 88% is in the advanced category, which is very exciting for the High School. Are there any questions about student growth?
I'm going to hold my questions.
Okay. So, the next chunk of data I'd like to show you, and there's a lot of slides here, so I'm going to ask you patience, and I'm just going to ask you to, we're going to take you by each grade in math, in science, and in ELA, and I won't stop and unpack every single slide, but there is a common theme. What we did was we provided the traditional slide that we have, which measures over time how a grade has done in a subject area. We have provided a trending line that shows you, hopefully, an upward scale in how many students are increasing in the area of proficient and advanced, which would be our two blue categories. And this dotted line at the bottom, that trending line, is calculated to reflect the amount of students that hopefully are going down in the area of needs improvement and warning. So, each slide would be best seen if we had a solid line in an upward motion from left to right, and the dotted line going down from left to right. So, our 10th grade ELA, we have an uptick each year in the amount of students that we are putting into the advanced category, 33% here, up to 40% four years later, and we have a reduction overall in our students who are needs improvement and/or failing. Keep in mind that, right here, and I thank you Superintendent Gormly, nobody failed the MCAS in Milton High School in 2012. That's why there's no red box over here. There's an empty box there. So, well done to the High School group of students. In math in grade 10, we have a nice trajectory. I can't state enough that that dark blue is advanced. So, we have continued to increase our students in the advanced category from 58% to 67% of our students. So, 67% of our students at Milton High are in the advanced category, not proficient in advanced, but the advanced category. So, we're reducing that number here. That trajectory is going down, and we have more students bumping into proficient, and obviously, more students bumping into advanced. Another nice reflection of data for the High School. Biology, some students take it in 9, most all students take it in 10. The trajectory of our scores show a nice, again, advanced students 14%, 17%, 27%, and 39%. That is a very nice trending upward in advanced scores in our science, in ninth and 10th grade biology, and we've had a moderate to slow reduction in students who are in needs improvement and in warning. The aggregate score of our 6th, 7th, and 8th graders in math show a similar rise, again, this is all three grades in one slide, that we have a rise in students who are proficient in advanced in math across the three grades, and we have a downward motion of students in needs improvement and warning in 6 through 8 in math at the middle school. Keep in mind, and for the public to know, that each school will come and unpack these by grade and by subject area when they present with their site councils at a future date. ELA at the middle school, we have a lot of students here who are in the proficient category. We are eking our way up in the advanced category, but quite frankly, that's a flat screen. I think the work, if you have a challenge in the screen, is to say out loud that our students need to be in advanced. We feel that the work right now, although it's great that we have as many students as we do in this proficient bar each year, that we need to make sure that we absolutely take this light blue bar and dump all those students into a higher-level score of accountability, which would be advanced. So, our work is differentiated in each grade, in each subject, where in some content areas, we're really working on moving students out of warning and putting them into the next bucket. As you could, as you have just seen, the High School did a great job of putting all their math students in that advanced bucket. The 6th, 7th, and 8th grade English teachers do need to do some work around putting all these students, which is applaudable, into that higher level of achievement. That is the expectation that we would have for them. 8th grade science has brought up their students in advanced, but this is another category where our 8th grade science, which is no surprise that there is a K-12 Science Committee meeting, and talking about elementary, middle school, and high school science, that this score needs to be better, that trending line is not steep enough, and there are not enough students in our advanced category for science, and 12% for a middle school. Even though that's better than the state, it doesn't mean that it's good enough for the Milton Public Schools. So, as you will see in future meetings, science will be something that we talk about all year. This is a curriculum issue. It's an instruction issue. Our students are definitely able to read, write, and problem-solving, as we see in English and math, and we expect our science to be aligned, and some excitement built around our science at the elementary, middle school, and high school level, which we think will generate, the combination of those things will generate better student achievement. We're going to start at math in grade 3, and I'm going to not stop and talk at each one. We have a trending line moving forward. Again, some nice advanced scores going from 29 in 2009, all the way up to 45 in 2012. That's a nice trending line up and a nice trending line down. 4th grade math, again, same. We have a nice trending line up, more students each year going into the higher categories, and less and less students moving down to only 3% who are in that failing category in math in 4th grade. 5th grade, I apologize, the school committee, it did come out in your chart in print. We have a very nice trending category in 5th grade math. The 5th grade has been a standout grade for us this past few years. We went from 42% students in advanced up to 51% of our 5th graders are advanced in math, and another 31% in proficient, with a total of 82% of our students in proficient or advanced in 5th grade math. The work that is happening in mathematics at the elementary level, at the leadership of Holly Concanon, has been great, has received great results from the teachers, and more importantly, in the student achievement of our students. Grade 3 ELA, excellent projection, moving forward in an upward trend, but the same that we would say out loud is that we would expect more students in our advanced category, and we want that trending line to have less students in the needs improvement. Grade 4 ELA, a higher arc in that trending line. We've gone from 18% up to 26% in advanced, and we are maintaining 78 or 80% roughly advanced proficient achievement level for proficient and advanced students, which we consider very good, but that should be better, and that is the work of our 4th grade. 5th grade in ELA, we have trending lines that are a little bit flat, and again, the conversations that we will have at the elementary level, middle, and high is, why is that? What does the curriculum say? They can drill down to the question, the type of question, the student, the classroom. All of that data is available to us just this year. We have sent out a team of Milton Public School teachers and administrators and central office folks to the data warehouse training, so we can all learn how to access this data and drill this down to who the child is, what question did they get right, what question did they get wrong, what genre is it from in our ELA curriculum, and what are we spending more time or less time on, and what we need to do to ensure that students get the correct curriculum and the instruction is done in a way that engages all learners. Science in grade 5, we've made some gains. Science, again, is an area of challenge that we will bring up at the end of this presentation. When we get to our subgroups, we tried to just give a quick comparison in this presentation, where we compared our students in subgroups, our high-needs, to the state, and I have provided you, in your green folder, a set of graphs and data sets that dig deeper into some of our subgroups that I can explain at another time. I wanted to get the data out to you. It wasn't polished enough to be able to put in the presentation. Again, this new data warehouse technology has just been made accessible by the state in August. We sent folks out to training in September and October, and all of our administrative team is getting expert, as we speak, in being able to access the data in a more meaningful way. We hope to be able to have a committee that meets just around the subject of subgroup data and utilize the new technology, so we can bring you more detail around curriculum and subgroups and students who are not achieving, and really peel back the why, and then what we're going to do about it, and how we're going to measure it in the future. Just as a quick table reference, our students in our high-needs, again, high-needs group is made up of special education students, ELL students, and low socioeconomic students. We are at each grade level either even or better than the state. We have to compare ourselves to somebody, and when we do so at the state level, as a bar that we'd like to set at least the foundation level by, it's good to know that our students in this high-needs group are outperforming the state in 6 out of the 7 grades that we have in ELA. The high-needs group for science and technology at 5th, 8th, and 10th, where we get measured, we are ahead of the state in our high-needs for science. Our high-needs math scores are ahead of the state for our high-needs group, except for one category. So, we only have in high-needs one category where we did not beat the state out of those 21 different grades in three different categories. So, we're 20 for 21, and either being even with or ahead of the state in those categories for our high-needs students. To take one subgroup and compare it to the state, we chose African-American Black, which is our largest subgroup, and we compared that in English Language Arts. When we measure our students in that subcategory of students versus the state, you can see that we are ahead of the state in each grade for ELA by 10, 5, 18, 19, 11, 5, and 12 points respectively from grades 3 through 10. In math, we are ahead of the state in every grade in mathematics in our African-American subgroup. Again, when we look to a baseline to compare ourselves to, the first thing we would do is compare how we're doing against the state, and then we would flip that lens closer and shed more light on our own students and how they compare to each other in the classrooms which they sit next to each other in. The African-American subgroup in the area of science and technology, we are ahead of the state in grades 5, 8, and 10, the grades in which we're tested in science. So, there is some overview of our subgroups, some overview of our student achievement by proficiency, overview of our student achievement by student growth model, which again, results in the Milton Public Schools being a Level 1 district, and the top 25% of the state, which we consider an achievement with work to be done. When we compare ourselves to the other districts that we like to compare ourselves to, we generate two lists. One is the Bay State League, and the other is a list that was cultivated a few years back by a committee. So, when we look at the other cities and towns and districts that we compare ourselves to, as you can see, this list is all the folks in the Bay State League. We are the only district in the Bay State League that has achieved a Level 1 status. And, again, to achieve Level 1, that's all students and high-needs students. And then, in the districts by which we like to compare ourselves to, Belmont, Hingham, Holliston, North Andover, Reading, Situage, Sharon, Westboro, Westford, and Westwood, there is only one other district that received a Level 1 designation by the state. So, when we look at ourselves compared to the state, and we look at ourselves compared to our league, school districts, and districts that we feel are ones that we compare ourselves to, apples to apples, we feel that we have done well in terms of our Level 1 designation. Yes, Member Kelly?
So, what do we attribute that to?
Excellent leadership.
I would agree with that.
I would attribute it to, and we started, so when we break down the data, I think what we can attribute the, in general, what we can attribute the Level 1 accountability status to, is that engaging all learners is very important in the Milton Public Schools, that we work towards creating all of our resources in the classroom, where teachers get the skills and the teaching techniques and the materials they need to engage every single child. Superintendent Gormly, over the years, has built programs around special education, opening AP, opening, encouraging SAT, setting a high bar for students and for staff, so aligning curriculum, increasing the skill set of all of our teachers, supporting our teachers, and creating environments where students and families feel comfortable to learn and want to come to school to learn. And the school committee in a town that has provided new schools, and budgets that have provided those materials, and the staffing levels, I believe, in general, in a very overarching way, has provided that result.
So, that was a great answer.
Thanks.
I guess, the way I see it comparatively, because if you look on Boston.com, and you look at our MCAS scores, and you see where we're ranked as a community, we are not in the top. But, what I see that's reflective of, it's something we've talked over years, is we take students as they come in the door, and then we help them grow, right? And it seems to me, and I could be wrong about this, that the new PPI index is more reflective of the system taking a student where they're at and growing them than achieving a high score, right? And I think that's sort of why we're definitely moving kids, and that's ultimately what we're here to do, right? I mean, obviously, we want everybody to be at a proficient level, but the more important thing is taking them as they walk in the door and saying, okay, on all levels, we're going to, you know, have you grow. So, kudos, you know, to all the things you've just outlined, but to me, that's what a great school system does.
I think the student growth that you have seen at the Tucker, as an example, last year's, 2011, scores at the Tucker, Tucker's 5th grade scores were, math scores, were the top student growth scores in the state. So, again, to your point of taking students from where they are and moving them forward year by year, connecting each year, and connecting the curriculum, and connecting the students to what they can know and be able to do, and move them forward each year, as a group of all students, and paying attention to and always being vigilant around students in high-needs and our subgroup students, because they make up the all. So, you're only as strong as your weakest link, and we always need to pay attention to what we're doing to reach high achievement for all students, but how we scaffold that learning and that student achievement for the students who aren't reaching those levels. And opening up opportunities and programs, and making sure that every classroom represents a place where teachers are responsible for student outcomes, and also are getting support and engaging all students, that's the goal. And it's a long-range goal, and it takes a lot of professional development and a lot of work for teachers and administration to coordinate that work, and it takes a lot of work on behalf of the students. The students are buying into working hard, and we have a very, you know, a great community of parents and students that come to work hard every day.
Great job.
Very quickly, just to round out the scores, we also don't just assess ourselves on how we do in MCAS and in Level 1 categories with the state. We like to compare, especially the end game at the High School. We've shown you this chart before. This is our SAT test score breakdown. So, in 2002, we had about 90% of our students taking the exam. That has reached by 2012, by the College Board standard, 100% of our students taking the exam. That score that we have has increased from a score, average score, a combined score of 1024, is up to 1549. That is about 50 to 49% over the national average of all public and private high schools. The average score across the country for public and private schools is 1500. So, we have all of our students accessing the exam, and we're still above the state, excuse me, still above the national standard for public and private schools. So, it's exciting that that's all students, and it's exciting that it's a high level of achievement. In the AP category, which we feel is a capstone at the High School that students should work towards, and open to all students, in 2001, we had 167 test takers. In 2012, we had 299 test takers. In 2012, we had 299 test takers. So we're almost doubling the amount of individual students who take the test. We have the amount of tests taken of 313 up to 608. That means we're almost doubling the amount of AP tests taken. While we increased all that in doubling the amount of students and doubling the amount of tests taken, you would think that your average score, with more students taking part, the average score has gone from a 50% of students who've got a three, four, or five, which is college credit, to 66% of the students getting three, fours, and five. We feel that this is a great indicator of having a high expectation. AP is not only good for the students who do AP, because it's the best representation of how they will do in college for college readiness, but it also sets the expectation that when you walk into Milton High, there is a lot of high expectation on you, that all students partake in it, and it's not just a select group of students. So it's always about the all. It's always about channeling students to a high expectation level. And the SAT and the AP success at the high school anchors the district in what I consider to be a high expectation environment. Mr. Sharon?
Just to clarify, that last bottom right-hand corner, the 66%, that's not of students taking the test. So that means 66% of the 608 tests taken qualified.
That's correct.
So it's even better than 66% of the students that took it. It's 66% of the 608 tests that were taken. So many students who took those tests, took more than one test, qualified. That's very exciting.
So Superintendent Gorme likes to point out, it's not the same students just taking more tests. Not only do we have more students taking tests, but we have more students enrolled in the program and taking part in the program. And the open enrollment and having any student who would like to take on that challenge have access to do so has not only produced more students taking part in a rigorous curriculum in preparing themselves for university, but the level of success of those students has been significant. And we attribute that to working more with middle school students to prepare them. That's a big building block. And we, the superintendent and I attended a workshop last month and I represented the middle school piece of that equation. And also to the professional development that every teacher that teaches AP has to take a week of their summer and go up to St. John'sbury, Vermont and take the AP training. And that training goes a long way, not only in the class that they teach, that's the AP content class, but the other four classes that they may teach that's not AP. Lastly, post-graduation plans for our students. Last year, we have about 86, or excuse me, 96% of our students to go on to university. Mostly 81% of those at four-year college, 15 to two-year college, and 3% to employment and less than 1% to the military. So our post-college plans are very robust as well. Some of the highlights that we have, very quickly, the Milton Public Schools is a Level One district, top 25 in the state. Each one of our schools, and should be noted, are Level One schools as part of that district Level One accountability status. Two of our schools, the Collycott and the Glover, have been, have received accommodations from the state, the Glover for High Progress, and the Collycott for High Progress, and narrowing the, excuse me, the proficiency gap. That is very high recognition from the state. Not very many schools have received those accommodations across the state. And we applaud them for that. We applaud the staff and the students for that success. 100% of our eligible seniors participated in the SAT and they outperformed the national average. And our AP exams, as we just spoke of, have been increasing in participation and tests taken while increasing the AP exam scores. The challenges that we have is to continue to maintain that Level One status for all of our students in high needs. As we showed at the beginning of the presentation, that we have to increase our student achievement each year. So we can't just do the same as we did this year and we'll maintain that level. We have to increase the level of achievement of all students and all of our high need students to maintain that level. So that's a priority. And that measurement is very clear and was outlined at the beginning of the presentation. Continue to raise the number of all students to achieve and advance and proficient in all three subjects. And obviously, on the other end, reducing all those in warning. In general, we always work towards increasing the rigor of every single classroom for every single student across every subject from K to 8. So as they move into the high school, they are all prepared with the fundamentals to be able to access all the opportunities and high programs, high-quality programs that we have at the high school, i.e. the AP and the SAT are the end game. We are a school system that wants to prepare our students for post-high school and college readiness, and we feel that having that goal does this. And we want to reduce the achievement gap and proficiency gap for all students in the high needs area and our students who are our largest subgroup, our African-American Blacks. So those are our challenges moving forward. In your handout, in the green folder, is an appendix of subgroup information that kind of peels back some of the data. It may need some interpretation at a further date. Any of the school committee folks who would like to have that conversation, I will gladly go through that data with you. The data and the graphs that are provided would be very hard to put on the screen as they're not really screen-ready, as you can see by the font size and the, but we are working at getting, mastering the data warehouse technology so we can truly look at every single child, what their status is, what we need to do for them, and what the curriculum in teaching and learning initiatives that would be successful for them. Our goal is to, that by school and by grade, we look forward to hearing from each individual school in their site council to talk about the initiatives that they have been utilizing in the past and in this year and forthcoming. There's a lot of creative work being done in each of the schools around RTI, flexible grouping, before and after-school targeted support for students in engaging all learners in the classroom through curriculum work and instructional PD. So this is the district data, and I am open to any questions that you may have.
Anyone? Mr. Walker?
So I think that the question that I ask myself is, how should we talk about this and how should we measure ourselves? I think that first and foremost, we should pause and acknowledge the great work that our teachers do every day and our leadership team does, as evidenced by the Level One status, which we should all be proud of. And in general, I think I would say, we've got an excellent school system. That's what I tell anyone who asks and even some people who don't. So I think what we're doing is working for the most part, and it's working well for most populations. But I've got two concerns that I'm feeling a sense of urgency about. One is the African-American subgroup, and I pulled some stats off of the state website. But if you look at the, it's MCAS results by subgroup, by grade, and subject, if you look at the data on all grades mathematics and all grades science and technology, the percent of students at each proficiency level, the gap between African-American Black and white students is quite dramatic. And if you go back to your growth chart, while I would agree that the percent of proficiency, anything 60 or above is a good score, in both cases, math and science, I'm sorry, English Language Arts and math, the Tucker is, has a pretty significant gap in terms of the percent of students at proficiency as compared with our other three elementary schools. So with regard to the question, how do we measure ourselves, I think it's great that even with that particular subgroup, the African-American Black, we're exceeding the state average. And that's not the measure that I would suggest. The measure that I would suggest is how are each of these populations performing as compared to students that they're sharing this classroom with? And in that regard, I'm concerned. And I've asked for a while about what our achievement gap strategy is, and I haven't heard a clearly articulated strategy. And more importantly, this, I think, underscores the sense of urgency. And the chart you showed that looked at, the fact that that particular subgroup didn't meet the target over a four-year period says to me that whatever we're doing for that particular population is not working well enough. So I'm going to be insistent that I'd like a strategy, I'd like to hear a strategy that we can implement quickly. And I'm not very interested in hearing what we have been doing. I'm interested in hearing what we'll do differently to address the gap that this particular population has. And as you're fond of saying, Mr. Phelan, each of these students only are in third grade, fourth grade, fifth grade once. So I don't think we have a lot of time here. And I'm wondering whether this model that we have where each school comes in and makes their presentations is the most effective way to have this discussion. I don't think it is. I think that it will be more effective to hear what our district-wide strategy is and based on this data, perhaps how we'll allocate more resources or a different strategy for the Tucker and how we'll allocate more resources for this particular subgroup. But I think we need, we need a coherent strategy and we need it quickly.
If I might, and then, Mr. Phelan, the, I also want to bring your attention to the other elementary schools, Mr. Walker, when they don't have the bar for African-Americans. That's, those two schools have an issue. Those schools have an issue.
Yes, yes.
An issue. So it's not just the Tucker.
Right. And it's just that they don't have the 40.
Absolutely.
Number of.
And so what we're do, we'll bring you that plan with measurable goals. We had issues in special education, similar issues in special education. And in special education, there are contracts with families and services have to be provided and progress is, again, monitored. There are so many meetings that have to happen every year. So we will bring you the plan. We started working with the leadership team. And what's important to me is, one, does every teacher in every classroom know who, who these children are, what their scores are, what their needs are, and understand what happened in their classroom last year and what the scores are of the children in front of them? And then coming, what we're doing now is working with, again, making sure, sharing across the district, what are the programs, what are the instructional techniques that have worked in the individual schools with individual children, and then replicating those across the district and across the K-12. So that, for me, what the charge is to the leadership team is to actually come up with individual contracts. Because in the way that I look at the district, the children in special education, and again, we had a similar issue in special education, those children have contracts and individual plans were made. And for me, talking to the leadership team and them talking to their teachers, this has to be a child-by-child approach. It has to be charting, to Ms. Kelly's point, not waiting and seeing how we do next year for those individual children and having benchmarks every month to see if they're making the progress. So we will bring you a plan for how we are going to in the immediacy of, as you said, every week and every day going by. So when you mentioned the Tucker, again, we're not proud of this. It's, again, and what I've said to the leadership team is, you can, we can do this kind of work. You know how to do this work. You know how to raise the achievement and you have to target this subgroup and you have to bring about results. So that you see the bar on the Tucker next to the African-American Black, but just because, again, you understand it, at the other elementary schools, that's, there are similar issues at the other elementary schools.
Right. And I was referring to the slides 17 and 18, I think, the district growth. So that's simply the percent at proficient or higher. So that may, I'm sure that isn't just African-American. So there as well, I think, the question is, do we need to allocate more resources to the Tucker in general to raise that overall percent at proficient or higher?
And to your, one point that you made, what are we doing that's working and what's not working? So we're doing work with Ms. Yuretsky, because there are Title I funds there and you talk about allocation, actually charting the progress of children from last year, what worked and what didn't work with individual children, and then replicating that for all children. So we will bring it the next meeting back. The plan that we have right from, to me, I've said, identification, you know, we see the next group of children we have, but do we really know? Do we know what their needs are? And again, evaluating what we've done and moving ahead. So we'll bring that to you.
If I could bring your attention just to, I apologize to the public because it can't go on the screen, but slides in the appendix that you have in your green folder, page 49 and page 50, through the new technology, we're actually able to break down data and try to compare groups of students in an attempt to, you know, finely tune our view of student achievement. Page 49 is a bar graph that depicts every grade in a different color. And the CPI or the, whether they have been advanced proficient, their CPI score, if you notice that first page 49 is white students in math at each grade level, controlling for whether or not this group would not have any ELL students, low-income students, or students that had disabilities. So this is a student who is white, who does not have any of those characteristics. How did they do? So across the district, in each grade, you can see that they, over time, from 2006 through 2012, have been at the high level between 90 and 100. If you turn the page and we do that same process for students who are in the African-American back, subcategory, you can see that if we measure students who do not have ELL or low-income or special education but are students of color, especially starting in 2009, which happens to be the year the Superintendent Gorme took over, you see a nice upward trend in the student achievement at each grade level going from left to right. We have students achieving at about between the 73 to 82 percentile band, all the way up to the 100 to 89 to 87 band. So that work, to me, is a very direct comparison of student for student. If I'm sitting next to a student and one student does not have any of those characteristics, by the way, which the state says are high need characteristics. So the high need characteristics of ELL students and disabilities in socioeconomic are the challenges that the state says and the research says keep students from learning. But it shouldn't keep anybody else from learning. And so when we measure student for student, it's not perfect and there's still a gap at certain grades between a student who's in the white category and a student who is in the African-American Black. But there is some positive, very clear trending in that scale on page 50. That's the type of data that we need to do in research, in review, and are able to access now, not only when we do subgroups, but when we do all students and we do students in a certain grade, and when we do students when we talk about how they did in open response questions and certain types of math questions, that type of pulling back the layers is available to us. And so we did try to investigate a little of that between the last week or so, because we are concerned about the achievement gap, as Member Walker has described, and there is work to do. But we feel that there is some data that indicates some promising practices for some students in that category of African-American Black.
Other questions? Ms. Kelly?
Just in terms of a plan.
Just in terms of a plan, what we're talking about is any subgroup that's, is that, so.
Yes.
The approach that is going to be taken is, how are we basically bringing everyone up to, and what are the strategies that we can apply?
Thank you very, thank you very much, Mr. Phelan. Outstanding work. And I think, again, to have this data and to Ms. Kelly's point, to have the internal assessments, that we're just not going to keep working really hard and hope next May that the scores go up for all of those subjects to chart them. I'm going to leave the happening so that you can move the meeting ahead. And I do have to say one thing. When we're talking about achievement, parent-teacher conferences are next week. And so if parents are still up or people are watching, I would encourage every Milton Public School parent to avail themselves of a parent-teacher conference next week. I've told our principals I wouldn't settle unless I had a hundred percent. I'd hold every report card till every parent came for a parent-teacher conference. Now, we can't do that, but that's the goal. And we're going to reach out to every parent to make sure that, again, the time might be short, but the message is strong, and the message is even stronger to the children, that their parents will want to come to their school and want to talk to their teacher about their achievement. And I'll hold the rest of my items till our next week, next meeting.
And to my report, what we have put off for far too many meetings is the evaluation of the superintendent. Member Bagley Jones can't be here tonight, but she did indicate that she would submit hers to me in writing. So I'd like to go ahead and do this as, just for reference, next year, we will be piloting a new method of doing this. This is our last year under the current method, which is to say that the members, in response to the superintendent's self-evaluation, will make their statements about what they feel should be included in the superintendent's evaluations. I will sit here and take notes. I will then try to amalgamate all that into one document, which I'll give to you for our next meeting. So, and that will be able to get the feedback for the superintendent's evaluation. We are going into a new evaluation method based on the new education evaluation, the educator evaluation cycle that the state is putting through that we're going to pilot with the superintendent. So this is actually the last year of this particular form of the evaluation. And as we'll see at a later point, that will require a change in our policy with respect to the superintendent's evaluation, as the current policy, current policy has issues with the meaning law, changes of last year, but it will be totally distinct from the educational educator evaluation policy. So that's the one big piece under my report. We have a couple other items, but they will be fast. So I really want to try to get through the superintendent's evaluation tonight. And so, as I say, I invite members of the committee to make their comments. As I say, some people have committed them to writing. If you want to summarize and give the writing to me, that's fine, but be aware that anything you give to me in writing is a public document. It's part of the record. So it is your choice on how you would like to do that. And rather than call on people, leave it up to people to decide how they want to proceed, who would volunteer to go first.
I'll first.
Mr. Dera, I sense a trend.
It's only been six weeks. We might as well not wait anymore. Okay. So from what I understand, we're kind of reading over the superintendent's evaluation, evaluating that based on her. So that's what I did. So under Superintendent Gormly's leadership, both students' participation and achievement have improved. For example, the number of AP test takers went up, while the percentage of passing scores increased by twelve percent. In addition, SAT score participation is at a hundred percent. For the MCAS, all schools have achieved a designation of Level One by the state, the highest level attainable, as we heard again tonight. Superintendent Gormly has set strong goals for this year, for example, having the proficiency gaps and working collaboratively to negotiate teachers' contracts, providing organizational stability to French, English, and Co-Top programs through the integration of STEM program, as well as a possible limit on French enrollment. She's also proposed increasing mathematics instructional practices for teachers, including technology integration. Her goal this year of increasing student participation, increasing extracurricular activities is outstanding. Also, the goal of continuing the practice of transparency with regards to budget and policy decisions is a well-thought-out and great practice. She continues to set goals which include building strong relationships with the school leadership, teachers, and parents. Superintendent Gormly's ability to lead, as well as consistently welcoming others to participate in this decision-making process, not only fosters a great community but encourages a strong and effective leadership team as well. Her style and dedication to the Milton Public Schools is without a doubt what makes her a strong force and also inspires parent and student confidence in the Milton Public Schools.
Who would like to go next?
I'll go next. So I also am basing my evaluation on the superintendent's goals. The first one was to continue to increase student achievement. There's a great deal to celebrate, actually, as we just had clearly articulated for us again tonight about student achievement, what with the NIASC accreditation of the high school and the AP advancement data, a hundred percent student participation in SAT exams, the MCAS results, and the commendations that we've received for those results. In addition, the onset of the three-stage process of vertical alignment of our math curriculum with benchmarks is a tremendous and critically important undertaking, especially in light of the new Common Core State Standards. Your leadership, Superintendent Gormly, on student achievement is leaving an impact on all the children, teachers, and families. The second goal, to build and advocate for the Milton Public Schools budget. The model you use for creating and sharing the budget with the school committee and the community at large is working. There is an ample opportunity for input, as it is truly a budget process. The fiscal supports provided to the Milton Public Schools from the Milton Foundation for Education and the PTOs and the Milton Educators Association is extraordinary. And I believe it's due to the fact that you work so closely with these groups and have developed such strong relationships. In addition, our district is at the forefront of entering into a PPA for solar power opportunities, thus giving us tremendous savings. This is an example of you setting high expectations of your leadership team to identify all possible savings for the school district. And these savings benefit our children and the town as well. As a school committee member and a citizen of Milton, I appreciate your transparency and cost-saving endeavors. Third, and finally, the goal of strengthening the image of the Milton Public Schools. Superintendent Gormly, you are truly an ambassador, as you attend and collaborate with countless organizations and committees around town, always advocating for the Milton Public Schools. I speak with people all around town, and they respect you and your strong work ethic and the passion that you demonstrate for the Milton Public Schools. In closing, I would like to say that I believe that you have surrounded yourself with an outstanding leadership team. These talented educators want to come to Milton to work, return to Milton, and even move within the district because of your amazing leadership. You lead by example, you communicate effectively, and care deeply for the children, families, and citizens of the town. Thank you, Ms. Gormly, for your job well done.
I'm sorry. I just can't help but, I mean, amazing. Truly.
No, I'll go last.
You'll go last? Okay. So first, I'm going to apologize because I don't have any of my notes with me. But comparing it sort of to the whirlwind week I've had, you are the CEO of the Milton Public Schools. And certainly in my experience, hopefully knowing from my company is listening, I can never imagine the CEO doing as much in terms of visibly being at events, working with all the different committees that you work with, just constantly communicating to everybody. The reinforcement you give people in terms of a job well done can, I mean, that has to go miles for every team member that works with you. And I think on all of these three goals, without having you that personality and sort of that work ethic, you couldn't be achieving on those. And I just, I marvel at it. And I will give my little, you know, thing that I say about when we talk about this, we're evaluating the CEO of the Milton Public Schools publicly, on camera, so that everyone can hear, which is, you know, you can tell Mary is not comfortable sitting in this situation. But you are to be commended. I can only aspire to be as good of a leader in my business endeavors, as the example that you said, for everyone. And I think our kids, you know, reap the benefits of that, as well as our families and our community overall. So thank you very much.
So as the resident HR executive, of course, I have some detailed, some general comments, some specific comments, and then some ideas for improvement. But I agree with everything everyone has said. I think that if you think about what the perfect person for this job would look like or be like, that would be you. I think that the energy that you bring to the job is extraordinary. The knowledge that you have of the system and the people that work in this district is unbelievable. And you model the behavior that I hope everyone that works for us holds, which is that it is clear that you have an unwavering commitment to every student in the system. And that, I think, sets the tone for how your leadership team operates and hopefully how everyone at each level operates. And I want to be clear, I'm, just a technical point, this is the period from July 2011 through June 2012. So let's go one by one on these goals. Continue to increase student achievement. As we've heard, I think there's much to be proud of. The MCAS results, which referenced here a little after this period, certainly contain mostly good news. But as we've discussed this evening, I think that we need to make sure that there aren't any populations that are left behind. And right now, I think that we've got one where there are certainly some concerns. Some of the specific accomplishments, you know, I think we'll need to do a better job. And, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make sure for the next meeting that we include superintendent's goals for this year on that agenda, because we're already well into the year again. But I think on this one, this particular goal, I would say I'm generally pleased, but the lack of a clearly articulated strategy on our NIASC response and the lack of what I would say is a clearly articulated strategy on addressing some pretty significant achievement gaps are the two things that I think I'd like to see some improvement on. With regard to building and advocating for the budget, I think you do an excellent job there. I would suggest that that, in my mind, is not the level or type of objective that I'd like to see going forward. I'm going to be looking for bigger-picture strategies. I'm going to be looking for things that have a more dramatic impact. But on this particular one, I'd say I think you did a good job. With one comment, if one of the accomplishments you list is the onsite agreement for solar power, and if you're going to take credit for that, then you also have to accept the criticism that we had projected an off-site solar panel farm, and that has not been executed on. So I think those two cancel out. With regard to the image of the Milton Public Schools, I would say, and there as well, I think you've done an excellent job. And the only place where I think we collectively didn't do a good job image-wise was the discussion of the first-grade enrollment strategy and plan. I think there were certainly areas there where, or points in that process, where we probably could have done a better job. We probably could have moved it along a little more quickly, and I think we probably could have been a little more transparent. But overall, I'd say, I think you've done a good job. I think the areas that I've cited where I'd like to see some improvement, which is basically what I would call execution and follow-through. And I would urge you, there are times when I think you might be too deferential to us. I think there are a number of areas where we've talked about ideas for addressing particular areas. Achievement gap is one. Another one would be health and wellness, where we talked about some strategies for addressing or perhaps doing more in the area of drug and alcohol abuse. And some of those ideas and discussions seem to fall by the wayside. So I would urge you to try to do a better job of tracking those ideas, those discussions, and actually coming back to us and pushing us a little bit on prioritization, because you can't get everything done. And I think you need to say to us, well, Mr. Walker, Ms. Kelly, Ms. Bagley Jones, you've given me these ideas. Here's my idea for how we should prioritize and see what we say. But I'd just like to make sure that when we have those kinds of discussions where we're either asking for information or throwing out ideas, that that doesn't get lost. And I think a couple of times, more than a couple of times this past year, it did. So overall, I think you've done a good job, good to great, B-plus. The only thing that I think is keeping you from the A level, in my mind, is that the NIASC strategy, I think, was important. Took us much too long to talk about exactly what we were doing there. And achievement gap, we spent months and months talking about it, but we still don't have a strategy.
Rather than reiterate, let me just sort of sum up by saying that, as Ms. Sheridan knows, the chair gets to see you in a light that the other members don't often get to see you. As someone who talks to you, well, daily is probably understating it multiple times a day, and who sees people from, you know, every part of the community, in Town Hall and various other departments in the town, and represents the school committee to those folks, the respect for you as leader of this system is incredible across the town. I mean, it's not just, as Ms. Kelly said, you know, we'd like to be that kind of CEO. I think the other CEOs in town would dearly love to be that kind of CEO. The respect that Mary's held with across the town is, you know, just unanimous. I don't think there's any department head in this town who won't do anything for Mary. And that's an amazing accomplishment, as some of us who've been around town government for a while know, that sometimes getting department heads to agree on things isn't the easiest thing. So I think the level of leadership extends beyond what we generally see as a school committee, and really is a very much town-wide ability. see as a school committee, and really is a very much town-wide ability. I have to say, I, I can't imagine you doing anything else. I mean, it's like you were born to do this job, I think. I, I certainly think it's been the case that it's something, you know, Mary has looked for, for her, for her, her whole life. I don't see, this is a stepping stone to anywhere. This is, this is what she wants and what she does, and it's very clear. And I think as a district, we're very lucky to have you. So, as I said, throughout this, Ms. Bagley-Jones said she would commit her thoughts to writing. I will share them with you. I will incorporate them into a final draft, and I will bring it back to this group for our next meeting. I'll circulate it first, if anyone has any corrections. My idea is to bring it forward for a, a formal vote at our next meeting. Anything else on this matter? It's taken us two months to get here, but...
You weren't putting it on.
I know. Seemed to be a lot of things going on at the late. Let me try to hit my stuff very quickly. Request for qualifications. As people may remember, we put out an RFQ for legal services, not because we're upset with the legal services we're having, but we felt it was a good process to every once in a while, put that forward to ask for, ask for proposals from legal offices that, that do this sort of work, to get an idea of what is out there, what the comparisons are, all the various different things that are available to us. And we have done that, and we have received responses from about a dozen different law firms. What I would like to do, again, dealing with issues of the open meeting law, I would like to assemble a screening committee, which would not be a quorum of the school committee, to go through them and to come back to us with some recommendations. It would have to be three people or fewer, so we don't run into quorum issues of the school committee. If you are interested in doing that, I would ask that you just let me know, and I will try to appoint it within the next couple of days, so we have sufficient interest. And they are, the documents all exist in the superintendent's office. I'd like people to try to take a look at them, you know, possibly within, you know, a week, 10 days after that, with the idea of bringing something back in a meeting or two, to us, so that we can size the, up the landscape on this issue.
I'd like to volunteer myself and Ms. Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. Walker.
You're welcome.
As long as we can meet in the evening.
Yep. Okay. And again, anyone else is interested, Ms. Bagley-Jones isn't here, I will entertain that.
So, is there a timeline for this?
I would really like to get this done. You know, if we can get a, if, if the interest is such that we only have, say, three people who are interested in doing this, you know, I will say so right away. I'll ask folks to get in, schedule a meeting, go, go through the paperwork. We have a meeting in three weeks. It would be lovely if we could have a report back at that meeting, if not by the meeting after. I mean, I think that's the, the best goal. We don't want this to drag on. I mean, again, it's not, it's not an issue that we need to change, or, you know, whatever. But I mean, if we're going to do anything, we need to do it sooner rather than later. We get into seasons of, of negotiations and so forth, and we need to know what we're doing. And I mean, so, it's, it's getting, frankly, almost a little late in the year to be doing this. It's the sort of thing I probably preferred to have done over the summer, but we got into a variety of different issues there.
We can get a half-year rate if that's what the issue is, right?
I'm sorry.
We can get a half-year rate if that's what the issue is, right?
I don't think that's the issue. I think it's just the timelines of things we need to do.
Right.
So, I, I, I'd like to get this done. Ms. Sheridan, you?
Yeah, I was just, so I'm looking at the calendar. So, we have a meeting on the 28th and a meeting on December 5th.
And I would say it'd be nice for one of those two. I mean, the 28th would be preferable, but, no.
That's the latest.
Fifth would be the, otherwise.
So, is it your expectation that the subcommittee would...
Screening committee.
Screening committee, right, would review the submissions and interview, and then recommend a small number of finalists to the full committee?
It is, I would review and recommend for sure. I don't know how, I suppose it could be done as an interview, too. I mean, I will, I think it's probably necessary. I'm just trying to decide whether the, the advantage of doing the interviews in the screening committee is they don't have to be in a, in a public meeting.
Well, that's one, and the other is that there should be a smaller number for the full committee to do.
Oh, yeah. I don't, I don't foresee the committee interviewing everybody. In fact, even the screening committee may not interview everybody. The screening committee may see of these 12 people.
Right.
We're only interested in seeing, you know, four or five and recommending three. And I, I think I would leave that to the, to the screening committee to decide what, what works.
Right. But from best use of the full committee's time, I would think two or at the most three finalists.
That would be, seems to me the right number as well.
Right.
I, I don't see the, the full committee interviewing more than that.
All right. So, I'm not sure of the, the dates that Ms. Sheridan has articulated.
Well, we'll, we, we will be...
Definitely.
Right. But we'll, we'll get, we'll get to work.
We'll, we'll give it a shot.
We'll get to work.
And I deal with the attorney on a day-to-day basis, and when we did this with the Sped attorney, I was on the subcommittee. So, is that all right to introduce myself in the subcommittee? Good.
I think it's necessary.
Also, we have all of these sealed packages. So, I'd ask one of you to come in, and we'll take the materials and divide them and open them, and prepare packets for everyone.
Seems reasonable.
Hi.
Question?
I may be able to be on that committee as well, depending on when the meeting times up.
Several meetings ago, Rick Neely came in from the town government study committee, and among his presentations was, he mentioned the availability of the municipal financial management review that is done by the Division of Local Services. The Board of Selectmen have voted to request this for the town of Milton. There is currently, if they get the letter in now, they expect roughly a seven to eight month wait before they could get it in, but that's less than we had actually thought it might be. I was asked through the chair of the Board of Selectmen if I would co-sign the letter asking for the municipal review, saying that it, it would look better coming from the school committee jointly with the Board of Selectmen. I have no problem with that, but I am not signing anything on the, on behalf of the school committee without asking the school committee.
Move to authorize the chair to sign a letter to go to DOR in conjunction with the Selectmen requesting government review.
Second.
Any discussion on that? Ms. Kelly?
It's a financial management review.
Financial management review.
And if we could just hear from the superintendent on this?
Absolutely. To your point, I think you brought up, Mrs. Kelly, how fast can we get in the queue?
Sooner we sign the letter, the better.
All right. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you. 350th anniversary update, Ms. Sheridan.
This might be my final one.
No.
The year's almost over, but we're going out with a bang, and we're going to have a gala event at the Who's a Club on November 17th. It's a Saturday night from 7:00 to 11:30 p.m. It will be appetizers and a pasta bar and a cake by Montelio's and music and dancing. We'll discuss our, our time capsule that we'll be putting away, and we'll have a few brief presentations, but mostly it's an evening of fun and celebrations. So, we hope that people will come out and join us in the celebration. Tickets are only $35, and there'll be a cash bar. And you can order your tickets at the Selectmen's office at Town Hall on the second floor with Tricia Cahill, or you can go on the Milton350th.com, we've shortened that over the year, Milton350th.com website, to get the specifics of how to order tickets online. So, hopefully, people will be able to join us, and we'd love to have our limited number of tickets, only about 200 tickets are available to sell on, by November 12th. We'd like to close that, so that's fast approaching, so let us know. Thank you.
Thank you. The one item I added at our last meeting, we had talked about the MASC resolutions. Ms. Padera is representing us next week at the MASC annual meeting.
This week.
This week, that's right. Like tomorrow, right? There was one resolution that was left out of the booklet. You should have received it in the mail, in any case, you've received it, PDF of it from the superintendent's office. And just to do it very quickly, it's proposed by the MASC Board of Directors, and it's proposed, proposed that MASC file legislation to require that all members of governing boards of Commonwealth charter schools be elected by representatives of the member communities or appointed by elected representatives of member school communities. The issue being that, in many cases, the Board of Governors of Commonwealth charter schools are sometimes chosen by, in fact, the trustees of the organizations that set them up without input from local districts whatsoever. And so, MASC was proposing the, the resolution to, to encourage MASC to propose legislation saying that if you're going to have a Commonwealth charter school that's going to be drawing students from particular communities, the Board of Govern, the Board of Governing, Board of Governors of that charter school should be selected by the local school committees involved, the local communities involved. So, that is up for your discussion as to whether we want to recommend a yes or a no vote on that. Ms. Kelly?
So, if you have a particular charter school that is drawing from multiple communities or saying that those school committees would get together and appoint a Board of Governors? Is that, if you were to play this out?
Well, not necessarily together, but the, the Board of Governors would be nominated by them, or, I mean, for instance, each school committee would send one person or something like that.
So, are you saying that, it's, it's saying that the Board of Governors will be representative of the school committees involved?
Basically. I think that's the...
That no one else could be on the Board of Governors? I, I'm having trouble figuring out how this plays out in actual...
Well, it, the resolution says all members of governing boards of Commonwealth charter schools be elected by representatives of member communities or appointed by elected representatives of member school communities. So, the idea is that the Board of Governors would be drawn from the member communities from which the students presumably attending the Commonwealth charter school are being drawn. Ms. Sheridan?
I equated it with the, how we, we elect the people to serve on the Blue Hills Regional. That's what I was thinking, so it's not...
But that's not the way it's presented. So, if you were sending it to the community, that would be one thing. In other words, if, when a charter school gets created, the towns that it's drawing from, you would do an election, that would be very similar, right? This, to me, doesn't sound like that. I understand the concept, what they're trying to achieve, I'm not sure that this necessarily achieves...
Yeah, I think that they're not being too specific about how these people are elected. They're either elected, either elected by representatives of member communities or appointed by elected representatives. So, it would leave it open to the individual communities, whether there will be an election for that person, or whether, in fact, a board like us could appoint someone to represent Milton in this particular governing board of a Commonwealth charter.
And determine how, who would make that decision? I mean, we have students that go to charter schools from Milton, right? So, we would ask for members, do you know what I mean? I understand what they're trying to achieve, I'm not sure that that's the best presentation of an option to get there, so I'll be voting against it.
Anyone else have thoughts on this?
I, I'm, I'm not sure I see the benefit, and I think that the idea behind charter schools was that they would be less burdened by all sorts of administrative requirements. So, I, I don't see the wisdom of imposing this. So, I'm, I'm really not interested in supporting it. But they never listen to us anyways, it doesn't really matter.
My, my take on it, I mean, I understand where they're coming from, this idea of some of these schools where they have a, the people who set up the school basically run it and just take students and so be it, without any accountability back to the districts.
It's to be working.
Sometimes.
Sometimes. Sometimes it does, sometimes it doesn't.
I guess I would look for more balance. I mean, so I would move that we, we authorize our representative to vote against this resolution.
Second.
Anyone else?
Ms. Representative, do you have an idea?
Do you have a what?
An idea?
An idea?
Yeah.
On this?
Yeah, I mean, I see what, as you said, I see what they're trying to do, and, I mean, at the end, it says currently Commonwealth charter school trustees or, or board members are appointed by the Commissioner of Education, but in fact, most appointees are recommended or selected by the charter trustees themselves. So, then I'm really having a lot of oversight. So, I think it's just increased oversight.
Yeah. I'm not thrilled...
Better idea than in the way it is doing now, I guess.
Yeah, I'm not thrilled with the current situation, the way it's done.
I would probably, I would look to get a little more oversight, I guess, if I'm here.
Well, the motion on the floor is to, to instruct Becky to vote against it as, as currently written.
Correct.
That would not preclude you from using your best judgment, should it be amended in some other way, you know, that we haven't foreseen. I mean, when these things get amended, the, our representative has her own judgment as to what to do, because that's what happens. And they do get amended.
Well, it depends on whether the motion passes or fails.
Correct. That's a starting point.
Yes.
All right. So, the motion on the floor is to instruct Becky to vote against this as written. Any further discussion? All those in favor? Those opposed? Well, the motion didn't carry.
Good luck.
I think you're on your own. We do have it on our agenda for our next meeting to hear a report back on how it all went.
So, you want to report on the, all the resolutions?
You just let us know how the resol, what happened.
Anything else, like lunch?
Yeah. How was lunch? That's sort of...
Would you like me to deliver that report now, or should we wait for next week?
We won't ask you to comment on the, the after-dinner speaker, depending on who it is. That finishes my report. Finance Subcommittee?
Yes. First item is the end-of-year report for FY12. I believe we are at a place that we can, that I can make a motion to recommend that the full committee approve the submission of the FY12 end-of-year report to DESE. Is that what it's under?
Second.
Any discussion on that?
Just, just that it's a, it's a lot of work that goes into compiling this report. I think maybe this financial review that we may be undertaking may help us out in some regards, in terms of getting data more quickly from town side to whatever. But anyways, a lot of work, and we appreciate the effort.
All right. Any further comments? Hearing none, all those in favor of authorizing the chair to sign the end-of-year report on behalf of the school committee? That's unanimous.
It's a better motion. I don't think I made it, but that's good. The next is the capital committee and technology proposal. Mr. Walker, did you have any further discussions at Monday's meeting on this?
Well, we did. We, we approved the revised cover memo, as well as the spreadsheet that was attached, and I'm very pleased with where we are on that.
Would you like to make a motion?
I move that we approve the technology capital request and, and submit the revised memo to the capital improvements planning committee.
Second.
Second by Ms. Sheridan. Ms. Kelly?
I would just ask, is this something, at least a spreadsheet, that we could post, or maybe the whole document? Just on the...
Yeah.
Yeah, just on the...
Yeah.
Wherever you think is appropriate on the website, but it's just good information for people to be able to look at.
Well, as well, as well as the facility spreadsheet, the, this, the memo talks about both, although most of the facilities discussion will be handled by Bill Ritchie, because it's included information in the townwide assessment that he had completed.
Hearing no further comments. All those in favor of the motion to submit the technology proposal, capital committee? That is unanimous as well.
Next item is the FY13 proposed transfers. I guess I would say line item transfers within the budget. It's this document here that you folks have been sent. If we could just briefly, Mr. Gillis, just talk about sort of the big bucket transfers that have been made within the budget. Now, just to be clear with the public, this is not changing the bottom line of anything that's been appropriated. It's basically reallocating some of the money in different places where we see a need that has popped up that we're trying to fulfill.
Yes, thank you, Member Kelly. For example, first one, we've talked about having a strategic plan done for the school committee, a long-term plan, and having a consultant come in. So the business office is one area where we've found, you know, some efficiencies, and we could transfer $7,000 out of the function that serves the business office for the district and put that $7,000 into the school committee. As Member Kelly said, all of the transfers, especially in an accounting system, you can't just have a debit and no credit. The money has to go to and from one area to another. To address budget reductions in prior years in professional development, savings from the human resources and advertising, and the assistant superintendent's budget to go to cover professional development for our teachers and staff, so we continue to achieve at a high level. School leadership, the way we've budgeted historically in recent years, principals would have four or five accounts. One of them would be principal supplies. Principals don't need, nor did they actually spend that much in supplies, so they just want to reallocate the money into the classroom functions where they were doing that. So that reflects a change there. We added a residency coordinator mid-year last year after we had started the budget process. So again, that's an area where chargebacks to different revolving funds for administrative overhead, we could come up with $30,000 there to fund the balance of that residency position. We did have some staff exchange with teachers as they changed their functions, or in special ed, where we might have had them listed as a special ed teacher, and they might actually be a medical therapeutic provider, speech, OT, PT, physical therapy. And so there's some changes there as well. But all of the changes net to zero. There is no overall increase to the bottom line, the bottom line stays the same. We're just putting the money in the accounts where we're going to spend it, where we're required to report it to the DESE at the end of the year for next year's end of the year report.
If I, if I might, and our intention is, some school committees do and some don't, but we're going to begin, I think we decided once a quarter, report out and make any transfers between lines, rather than waiting till the end of the year to the finance subcommittee, then we'll report out to the full committee.
Ms. Kelly?
And just to talk about some of these categories. So as I look at this, and please correct me if I'm wrong, the last three, actually the last four, sorry, the last three, are really just reallocating into buckets where perhaps they were miscategorized from a end of year report perspective previously. But we are identifying funds to support three different things, I think, right? The strategic plan, some PD, additional PD that we were looking for, as well as the residency coordinator. So those are items where we identified potential savings in one category and were able to apply to a need, and that's what this relocation really represents.
And for everyone at home, PD would be professional development?
I'm sorry, professional development, yes. Sorry about that.
So you're making a motion, Ms. Kelly?
Yes. I think probably the easiest way, and you correct me if I'm wrong, is to approve... Do we have this in the summary category?
Yeah, the back summary page.
Hmm.
Last page. It was the second tab of the spreadsheet.
Right, so I guess what I was looking at is, looking for, is when we vote our budget, we typically have seven buckets with a salary and expense line in each of them. I guess I was hoping to recommend that that be our FY13 budgets, but I don't know that we have this unless I'm missing something. So I guess the better way to apply it is to take the budget transfers on the final page of this document, apply it to what was our FY13 submission, and basically apply it.
Right.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
Second it.
Second by Ms. Sheridan. Do you have that, Maureen?
Yeah, I wish I could. No.
I, we tried to apply the budget transfers listed on the fiscal 13 budget transfer request summary to the current year's budget.
I guess, as I'm even talking this out loud, we have not voted a allocation of budget buckets-
Yeah.
From what our original submission way back many, many months ago to the Warren Committee to final town meeting allocation. And so I guess as I'm talking this out loud, and I apologize, I should have caught this before, to me, we really need to vote those buckets, because that's what really sets the process. No? Mr. Walker, would you like to?
So we, we voted af- after the Warren Committee all-day meeting, we voted a bottom line.
A bottom line only, correct.
So my suggestion would be that we take the chair's motion, which is that we simply approve the transfers that are listed on sheet.
Right, but essentially, when we vote budgets, and, believe me, if we want to change this, we can talk about it, we vote categories. When we're establishing a budget against which we will manage, right? It's the seven categories that we have with the two in each of them. And it's against that that we will ask quarterly for the administration to come to us and say, we've identified an issue, we need to do some transfers, here's the recommendation, and we'd like to transfer. We have not, as of yet, we've definitely established a bottom line number, and everyone agrees to it, we have not allocated, certainly within the documentation here, the allocation is made, it's just I don't have those summary buckets to be able to present.
Don't we accomplish that if we vote the transfers, since it-
It's, if we could say that we're voting the transfers against something that we previously had established, yes, I would agree with you, but-
But, but the, the transfer sheet-
So would it be, Mrs., may I interrupt? Would it be the FY13 third column, Matt? Or the-
For each of the, but it's not broken out.
Right, Matt?
I think the, Ms. Kelly's intent is to say, she was suggesting we vote the seven bottom lines of the first pages of this spreadsheet, as, as they reflect the changes.
Right, and, yes. And in previous iterations of this, we would have done 14 different categories. That's what we've done in the past. That's all I'm saying, and then-
Mr. Gillis, would you like to jump in?
Sure. I, I think it's, Member Kelly is asking for a style point that historically the board has worked with, with the, we'll just call it the budget cover sheet, where there are the seven categories, and then they're broken down into salaries and non-salaries. This document is the detail that's always behind it, that builds up to those. I can have the cover sheet for the, for the next meeting. It's, it just didn't seem to be too helpful when we were getting into the detail of adding and subtracting. I mean, just the leadership or, I mean, the policy administration category, there's a net $25,000 change, but there's changes to, for the function areas.
Right.
And then to see where it goes into the instructional category, you want to see, I was just trying to give the detail that folks were asking for, that said, we don't want to overspend any of the categories if we can help it.
Without a doubt. And, and I think we can still take a vote that says that we would like those buckets to be reflective of the changes listed on this final page. Because ultimately, we couldn't get to even talk about this page unless we had the buckets that I'm talking about. It's just I can't reference a document in my hands.
The reports going forward will show the, the original budget, and then it'll track the, the total of the changes in each category.
Mr. Walker?
Mr. Walker, you're looking a little tired.
He didn't even raise his hand, I'm just-
I'm not tired. Thank you. I'm not tired, I'm just, I, so, we voted a bottom line.
Yes.
We had some idea, obviously, about how each of those categories were funded. Thus, we had to, because otherwise we wouldn't be able to talk about transferring from one to the other. So we must have had some idea about that. But, but if, if your intent is to vote those categories, then it would seem to me that the best time to do that would be at the end of the year, not the beginning of the year, since we're going to be doing this quarterly, and we're going to be moving money from place to place. As long as we aren't doing anything that reduces or, more importantly, increases the bottom line, I think we're fine.
Okay. So I think this might be a discussion better had in a finance subcommittee, if we might-
Okay.
Can we table this discussion?
Can we, can we vote the transfers?
We can definitely vote the transfers, definitely. And I guess what I would argue for is that perhaps we take up the subcategories and subcategories that are-
See you at 7 o'clock Monday morning.
There you go.
All right, so the motion on the floor is to vote the transfers as contained on the final page of the document that you received.
Correct.
Second.
I think Ms. Sheridan already seconded it.
Okay, let's go.
Anyone else have any comments on this? Hearing none. All those in favor? It's unanimous. Thank you. Finally, the negotiations with the power company on solar panels, we had, as was earlier referenced, we were looking at a solar power contract with a provider of off-site solar. We were in negotiations with them for a very long time, and were unable to come to agreement on a couple of the matters involving the contract, particularly on how certain chargebacks would, or certain credits to us would be computed. And the, the difficulty was significant, and to our mind, a stumbling block in the whole process. So we wish to move on to, as we are allowed to, having not come to an agreement with the low bidder, we'd like to move to the second ranked bidder on, from the bid. And so the motion that we would need is a motion to terminate negotiations with Borrego Solar for the off-site solar project due to impasse over terms in the contract, and to move to enter into negotiations with the next ranked proposer, Sage Stone LLC. And I have this written out for you, Maureen.
So moved.
Second.
This is the language provided to us by council. Any discussion on this? Seeing-
I'm tempted, but I'm going to pass.
Seeing none. All those in favor? That is unanimous as well. That concludes my report. Health and wellness, we had removed. Facilities Subcommittee.
Actually, Mr. Gillis was going to report on that.
Yes. Aside from the last issue, we have found a couple of energy efficiency projects to do with HVAC to save both electricity and heat. One at the high school, one at Pierce. We're able to do those, using up the rest of the Green Communities grant, as well as rebates from, and grants from NSTAR and National Grid. The payback on those projects will be about four to five months, and will save maybe 2% to 3% on our electrical consumption at the high school, and maybe 1% to 2% at the middle school, and will save on heat as well, because we're going to be putting motion sensors in the libraries and in other areas where if there isn't anybody in there, it won't be pulling in cool air from the outside, because you don't need to bring in the cool air to have an exchange if there's nobody in the rooms. So we've been kind of watching for this technology to come into price range since I've been here, and it's nice that there's been grant opportunities available, so we can continue to find ways to keep our buildings more efficient. We had a consultant, Northern Energy Partner, that came in and was able to find those projects that matched for us, as well as, Bill Ritchie took advantage, I think he bought ten or, maybe it was 20,000 light bulbs for the school and the town. They didn't buy them, he took them for free as they were being donated, and they save most of our lights, 5 kilowatts, was a significant savings. We would have had to buy them and replace them eventually anyway, so it's nice to have them. We can replace them as we need to, or as time sees fit. That's what some of our guys did after the buildings were cleaned on Monday with the storm. We replaced some hallway light bulbs. So that's what's been going on with the Facilities Subcommittee. We'll be meeting again in a couple of weeks.
I'd just like to comment that we are so fortunate that both Mr. Gillis and Mr. Ritchie are, you know, have that at the forefront of their, the work that they do. They're always looking for those opportunities for us to upgrade and benefit from rebates and refunds and more efficiency. So it's a pleasure to sit on that committee.
And with Joe Murphy, John Kibbie, and Rick Mounds from our citizen volunteers, very knowledgeable in the energy market, energy business, and, and an electrician, so it's, it's a nice group to work with.
They bring a lot.
Ms. Kelly?
So the energy efficiency project is funded how? I was a little confused in that.
A few thousand dollars from the schools, schools budget for maintenance, and more than 85% of it, between 85% and 90% of it, is funded through a combination of grants and rebates and refunds.
Just along those lines, the Consolidated Facilities Committee meets roughly once a month. We're meeting again next month. Mr. Ritchie's been giving updates on how his department is working through the town and their savings based on having people in their department who can work across town buildings. He has submitted a brief report to the superintendent for her e-blast, and we're going to try to keep working that in, and we're encouraging him to get that word out as well, because it's not just what's happening in the schools, it's what's happening in all the town buildings. And there's a lot of good news stories like this, where we're getting grants and so forth to save some money for the town. So we're just trying to get the word out on it as well. And that committee meets again on Tuesday night, so see what's happening there. Policy Subcommittee Report.
We would like to postpone this and move this to the next meeting, seeing as it's 10:35. I still have executive session. With due respect.
I hear a motion to postpone the Policy Subcommittee Report to our next meeting.
So moved.
Moved by Ms. Sheridan, seconded by Mr. Walker. All those in favor? That's unanimous as well. So that's to our next meeting. Old Business, Citizen Speak Response. Meeting Agenda Items, we've created a couple. Policy being one of them. We are, and potentially-
Superintendent Goals.
Superintendent Goals, and RFQ coming up soon. Maybe not next meeting, but-
Formal Superintendent Evaluation.
Well, yes, I'll bear that on. Ms. Kelly?
And budget is coming fast and furious. I'm a little concerned about our timeline here, but-
I don't see anyone for latest Citizen Speak. I think we have outlasted the crowd once again. And Ms. Gormley, you still, um-
Mr. Walker? Executive Session?
Executive Session still?
Yes.
All right. I would entertain a motion to move into executive session for the purpose of negotiation strategy with non-union personnel administrative contracts, specifically assistant superintendents and principals who do not have contracts for this year.
So moved.
Not be returning to open session, but would be adjourning directly from executive session. Mr. Walker, seconded by Ms. Sheridan, requires roll call. Well, Ms. Padara?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes.
Ms. Sheridan and myself. Yes, Ms. Kelly?
Yes.
Thank you all. Good night.